I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do all your windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINYS. Just call. Thank you.
Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. We are currently only with three members here, and so we're waiting a few minutes to start our public hearing. I see that we have the applicant, his engineer, our engineer, and the Butters who's here for the public hearing. The public hearing for proposed site plan number SP 3-18 located at 340 Oak Street. Dan, come on in and join us. Have you been sworn in?
I have, yes.
Alright, then come sit down and make us a quorum.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, thanks.
So we have our newest member, Dan Smith, joining us after his election on Saturday. Yep, right there you have your name plate in front of you already.
Ready to go?
Okay. So with that, we can open our public hearing for proposed site plan number SP 3-18 located at 340 Oak Street to construct new parking areas and make improvements to the stormwater drainage system at existing indoor sports facility, the Wolves Den Sports Complex. So I see that we all have a sheet in front of us from Maryland Associates with an outline of the plan, and I'll turn it over to the applicant first to introduce us to the plan.
Yes.
And then we'll have a chance for the board members to ask questions, to hear from our engineer, and then a chance for our Butters to let us know any opinions or concerns they might have.
Okay, thank you, Madam Kevin. Peter Fellmery from Maryland Engineers, Ian Lanzares with me this evening, is Mr. John Poria who is the applicant's representative for this project. I think everybody knows where the site is located, but just for a frame of reference, the site is located on the southerly side of Oak Street, which is shown in this area. It's about 600 feet south of the intersection of Oak and Church Street. As far as the Butters, we have Stop &amp; Shop, which, this is the Stop &amp; Shop building which is part of our case centers. We have the existing detention basin for Corporate Park Drive. And this parcel here was recently in front of the board for application for a medical building at number 15 for Park Drive. Behind the property is, property owned by Mr. Bill Murphy, I forget the specific entity, but he is the property owner. Our parcel consists of about 8.5 acres. It's located in the industrial A and medical marijuana overlay district. There is an existing large building located here. It consists of about 52,000 square feet, which is about 14% of the entire property. Currently, there is a small paved parking area in this location. The driveway is located here. This area was recently cleared and some reclaimed asphalt was placed for temporary parking. Currently, or recently I should say, there's been some tree clearing right in this location for proposed septic system repair. All the trees have been taken down. The septic system repair plan has been approved by the Board of Health. The project, as was stated in the advertisement, basically consists of the construction of a larger paved parking area as shown in this area with the associated stormwater controls and treatment methods. We have a treatment system located in this area of the site adjacent to Oak Street and a second detention basin located here towards the rear of the building. The access drive is going to be relocated from here about 100 feet in the westerly direction. We're providing about a 36-foot wide entrance. That's to allow for one aisle to enter the property and two aisles to exit. One aisle will be for right-hand turns, the second aisle will be for left-hand turns. The site distances in this location are very good. Both of them exceed 500 feet, and so consequently, we believe the site distances are not an issue. Again, the stormwater for the front portion of the site, which is this paved area, this part of the pavement, will be directed to this stormwater basin, and this is going to be designed as low-impact development using low-impact development techniques. It'll sheet flow over the parking area, enter grass swales here and here, flow overland over a vegetated filter strip, and into a somewhat shallow basin. The basin part of it, this location is 88, and with the elevation of the berm is 90, so it's about four feet. We have an outlet control structure here. Will discharge into an existing rock swale and go into the Butters' property. The second basin will take all of the roof runoff and a portion of the pavement from here back, discharge into the stormwater basin here, which will then overflow into an existing drainage ditch which discharges to the back of the property. Both of these basins have been designed to significantly attenuate the post-development flows. In addition to that, they will provide total suspended solids removal. This system will provide 86%. This system will provide about 72%. Since it's a redevelopment project, we don't have to meet the 80%. However, the weighted TSS removal for this system, which basically takes into consideration the roof and the pavement, roof being considered somewhat clean, we do believe actually will be over 80% total suspended solids removal. We have asked for four waivers. The first one was to allow, actually I should say, a waiver of the landscaping plan prepared by a landscape architect. We are showing some landscaping along the front of the property. In Tyler's review letter, he actually suggested some additional landscaping here, here, and along in here, along the entrance driveway, which is this area here, which we actually think is a good idea and would agree to do that. The second waiver we requested was for a traffic impact study. The third waiver was to allow the use of cape-cord berm along the edge of the pavement here and all the way in through here. There is no berm edging here and here because again, that's reliant on overland flow. We are proposing cement concrete curb at the entrance radii. And then the fourth is a waiver request for the requirement for a development impact statement. We did receive Tyler Nims, who's the review engineer for this project, his comments today. We really didn't have a chance to prepare a response or revise plans, of course. We do believe we can address all of Tyler's comments. Tyler did say he thought that the waiver for the traffic study and the development impact statement actually made sense based on the proposed project. I'll be happy to address any comments or questions the board has.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
The R.K. Centers, did you see the R.K. Centers letter that came to us?
Yes, I did. Yep, and they did, they received the copied plans and the drainage cowl and everything.
Okay, there's a couple of things that they put in there that they were asking us to address. Do any of those seem like a problem for you guys?
No, I think that what Dave was referring to, when this was initially cleared, apparently there was a, there was an overflow runoff onto Oak Street which made its way down into here, and actually, this flare-down section is one of the areas he was talking about. I've been down there and I certainly don't doubt his word, I just haven't looked in the system yet, so if there's some accumulation of debris, as long as it's associated with this, I think the applicant would be willing to do that. I mean, it makes sense. The other area was along this swale, which is actually on the applicant's property. I'm not sure why sediment debris got in here, if it did, or if it's just an overgrowth plant, so I haven't really looked at this. When I went out initially after, when this was reported, and I went out to take a look at it, I really didn't see a lot of sediment in here, and I'm not really questioning his comment. I'd be happy to talk to him directly, I just didn't have a chance to do it before the hearing.
And how are we in terms of parking spaces?
Well, we have a lot more than we did, but I think the, this parking table, which, there were a couple of mathematical mistakes on it on the site plan. Tyler pointed that out and I could see his confusion, but we use the zoning bylaw and based, and in addition to that information from John Poria who runs the baseball and the basketball operation there, there were a couple of items in the zoning bylaw which were pretty clear-cut. Example, retail space, office space, and snack bar. The two areas which we didn't, really couldn't find anything in the zoning bylaw, there isn't a lot of information on it, but we did style and handover. We used some of that information, and then again, John's input. We came up that we were going to need about 153 spaces, and the site as proposed is 166 spaces. Part of that is six handicap spaces, four in this area and two in this area. And we tried to provide more parking here along this driveway, but because the elevated groundwater is forcing the septic system up, this caused this portion of the parking area to be higher, and consequently, as we come back down to this existing grade we're grading, this is all side slope here, so we really didn't have the room to provide more parking spaces.
Can you show me again where the septic is?
Yeah, right here. This is, this is the, have you been out there recently?
No, but I remember at one point there was some discharge over on the left there.
Right here.
And what is that?
Right about in here.
Yeah. And is that part of the septic, or is that just?
Well, it's actually two, two things that were going on there. The first was, the septic system was here and it's surcharged, so it failed. The second was, actually, the roof runoff for this half of the roof and this half of the roof. The pitch goes like this. Used to come down into this catch basin which was actually located off the property.
Yeah.
And it would discharge, and it came down a 10-inch plastic pipe, and that pipe was broken. So that was causing a lot of the runoff, which was surcharging and coming down onto the property of our case centers.
Okay, so that'll be.
So the parking was two things. It was drainage and it was the failed septic system.
Okay, so when you're saying a repair to the septic system, it looks like a new septic system.
It isn't. It's called a repair.
Okay, just because it's an existing facility?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, but it's a brand-new system, and it's been sized, I forget the numbers, but for the new use, again, as I said, it received the approval of the Board of Health, and it's, it's pretty sophisticated in as much as it's going to provide more storage because during tournaments, that's obviously their peak, but it happens only three or four times a year. So we had to, we had to create a bigger, basically, pump chamber. So kind of flatten out the peak flows.
Okay.
And how do you expect the traffic flow to work during a tournament into that back parking lot and backing around? You got, it's good that you've got that two ways in and out.
Well, the idea was to, well, first of all, to keep, to get, once people get into the site, they don't get backed up on Oak Street. That was the whole idea of this separate driveway. As far as coming in, for tournaments, there'll be attendance directing traffic. As far as leaving, basically, this will be the control. John and I have discussed, and we're thinking the idea would be to put cones here and basically direct everyone in here, so, I mean, this is going to be queuing once the tournament's over and people are leaving. But the idea is to keep them on-site and not affect the traffic on Oak Street.
Is there any one-way kind of traffic control there?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because thinking about getting out.
Well, the, part of the thought process was, we're going to allow right and left turns to this designated left turn lane and a designated right turn lane as you raise it. But as far as a one-way traffic, I don't think it would work very well with this.
We haven't had any, we've staggered the times. So all the game, first games start at the same time, and then proceeding games are all 10 minutes apart, and we haven't had anything backing up into the parking lot at all. Our biggest issue now was, when they went to park on the side, they just sort of park at the wrong spot, they'll make up a spot, so you can't get two cars in at a time. So that's the only issue we run into now, and the attendant usually is out there, one of the kids would pay to stand out there, but.
And obviously, everything's going to be marked.
Yes.
Yeah. All these spaces will be lined. This one might be nice, entrance only, keeps the, that cross-traffic.
Well, that's a thought. Again, that was one of the reasons I was thinking that maybe at the end of tournaments, the cones would be set up, but if you were allowed just right turns in that, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt.
Where's that?
As you can, this was the area that he was talking about.
So make a right turn all the way to go in.
Yeah, just to come in here.
The cross-traffic situation.
Yeah.
And then it'll kind of.
Dan, you mean right, everybody comes in right? Not everybody, but.
Don't allow exiting.
Okay, yes.
Just a thought. Oh, through that part.
Diffuse the flow on the way in.
Just a quick comment here. Looks like the high point is 97, 98 rather.
Yeah, right here.
Right there. Everything else is flowing to the drainage area, this number one.
This, this area, right. With the exception of the roof, all of the roof, with the exception of this area, is coming back, well, it's actually going this way through this drain line and out. This roof is just a massive contributor to the overall.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. But I only see one catch basin in the whole system.
This cut, this is actually one catch basin, yeah. The idea is, again, to do the, that overland country style.
Right.
To have sheet flow coming down, that's why I'm not having berm here. This will come down, come into the, go over a stone diaphragm, come down this swale, get into this basin. This'll do the same thing, come down this swale, go underneath the roadway and come into this basin.
And we have a 102 in the lower part, in the other parking lot.
Correct.
Right.
The 102 plus right here.
Half of the pitch is two, basin one, and the other half pitch is two, basin two.
Correct.
What are your slopes, Pete, along the edge?
This here?
Yeah, the slopes are like, where are they, three to one?
Oh, this, this is three to one.
Okay.
Yep, we have a two-foot shoulder and then three to one. Once, as I said, I took a look at Tyler's letter. It'll take me a couple of weeks to make a response and some revisions to the plans. So, and any questions I have, I can serve with Dr. Tyler.
Well, why don't we see if the folks who came in to talk to us tonight have any other comments?
I would have deep comments.
Oh, Peter, oh, you, I didn't recognize you. Congratulations, Dan.
If you would mind just giving us your name.
Yeah, my name is Bill Murphy.
Okay, so you're the.
I'm the media butter on two sides.
Just a quick comment. He is the Bill Murphy.
As opposed to his son?
A great, a great improvement, to be sure. A ton of effort and a ton of time being put in, congratulations. I'm glad it's, something is finally occurring. I have a couple of issues, and we're talking about retailing your design. There's no way in heck you can base this parking situation on a, on a retail zoning. You may do it for the planning board, but in reality, you're not going to do it for the experience of tournaments on the site. And we've happened to have had the pleasure of dealing with, with the, apparently, the applicant's overflow in Corporate Park, having, having our own details out in Corporate Park because our tenants were so terribly upset with parking being taken up on their, in front of their units. It was a nightmare for several weeks last, last year. And I'm glad to see something occur. I don't think, however, that you've sufficiently handled the parking that is going to be necessary to accommodate, be it the four times a year, just like Gillette Stadium, four times a year, it's a harrowing experience for the, for the neighbors. And we want to try to avoid this as much as possible. I'm not against the project. I have a couple of, not being tuned in exactly to what the zoning requirements specifically regarding our parking layout, but I would, I would suggest that consideration maybe the planning board might consider, and the applicant might consider. This is a main entrance coming in, and it's somebody, I think Dan mentioned making it a, I'm walking somebody's way here. Making this a dedicated exit, one-way exit, which is fine. My understanding, am I right, am I right, Peter, that this is not going to be paved?
No, it will be paved.
Everything's going to be paved?
Correct.
Okay, that's great. I was, for the four times a year, parking is key. I think you have enough area here for probably about 10 feet, and enough area here for another, I guess, probably another eight feet, six feet, whatever. But I was wondering if this could be shifted down and get parking on this one side of the accessway. You're going to pick up another 16 or 17 parking spots and with, and not get into the, not get into the severe drop or the elevation issues associated with this, with the drop onto the Butters' property. Also, the same thing here. This is markedly elevated to accommodate your septic system and also accommodate the need for parking. This whole area couldn't be used for parking, but with the, with a modest improvement, this is 24 feet, that's a, which, here's probably a standard roadway access. But I think that there probably be some type of provision in here for additional parking with, and not the entire area, but certainly a good proportion of it, where you can get 18 feet more and maybe take a couple of feet out of this accessway, just to accommodate. There's another 32 parking spots along there, potentially. And again, we're talking four times a year, but that four times a year is going to be a nightmare. I don't think it's adequate. I don't know what the provisions are going to be in the future if it isn't adequate. They're going to spend a ton of money on this, to be sure, which is all very positive. It's clearly the applicant has come forward to try to ameliorate the situation that currently exists. But I'm just trying to capture just from what we have here now with minimal additional cost, additional parking, because Steve Tomasi has to deal with it across the street, I have to deal with it adjacent, I don't want any more details. My property just to accommodate his business, which he was not certainly willing to pick up, or the applicant wasn't willing to pick up, I have to pay for the details. And I just think this is the one shot to get it, to get this done right. And I wouldn't have any objection if the board wouldn't have any objection, even though taking a portion of this back area out here and just put the, we call it the crushed asphalt on it as a, as a necessary overflow area. And that would potentially solve a lot of problems. Again, four times a year, and I, and I'm talking about for modest costs compared to having to put a finished surface on.
So I would like to hear the applicant's response to that because my one concern is in addition, we had, we had, you know, the three concerns on this property. Parking is one, parking and traffic, that kind of go together as one. The other one has been drainage, which is at this point been impacting the Stop &amp; Shop and the R.K. Centers folks on the other side. And then the third has been, you know, making sure that when the septic gets redone and redesigned, it doesn't fail again, because that was the third, you know, issue that happened on this property. So I guess, I hear what you're saying, I don't know that the cost is that great, I just want to make sure it's not going to have a negative impact on things like drainage.
Well, are you all set, though?
No, I'm not all set.
Okay.
You left out one of Butters, and that is me, I'm on the downside of the drainage. And that ditch was put in, well, it's probably 30-some-odd years ago.
Okay.
And it, and, that's why. Where is it, Peter?
Right here.
There's the. No, no, the ditch up here. There's the ditch.
Oh, this ditch, this ditch. It goes, it's right here, goes all the way out.
Yeah, it goes, it, it comes off the property and was flooding out my, my lot, and I blocked it off many, many years ago, probably 25 years ago, and they put a pipe over the embankment down at the bottom, which in turn is at my property, and on, you know, 10 feet away from my property, and it floods out down below. Now, this is the time to, we've got to talk about drainage, this is the time to probably put some defensive mechanism on that probably around 400-feet-long trench, am I right, Peter?
Yeah, that's, well, it's from here all the way to the back, and.
Yeah.
I think this is 330 to the back property line.
Yeah, this is only got a two and a, this is only got a, it's, looks like a very big detention basin. And I'm an engineer, Peter did a great job here on the, on the septic system, it's very, very involved septic system of design, and accommodating it, pocketing it top, but it was a challenge, I'm sure. But I, but it's only got two and a half foot of freeboard before it goes out the outfall, and it's, that's the way it's designed. I think it's from 90 to 92 and a half, and then it flows out. And well, where does it go? It comes to me. And I would like to see something, either a small basin or, or even a larger basin like a KLS, further down that swale to allow anything that comes down there to settle out on their property before it comes down into mine. And I'm not talking about doing a very extensive job, but certainly it can be done with a, with a machine in a day and a, maybe a small spillway, so that would capture at that location, the saltation would, would fall out of it at that particular point, hopefully, and then it would flow further down by its natural course, but give an opportunity to stay on their property, because that, that swale impacts me further down, down, and it also affects our, is it our, K, RKR?
RKR.
RKR Centers on that back side, and it's a septic, they have a septic system on that back side as well. I'm not so sure, it's not the only septic system, but it's a, it's a septic system for the coal, I think coal store?
Yes, I think so. It goes across the street, but I don't know.
There is something.
The drainage.
For the drainage. Oh, septic system part of it goes across the street. There is one out the back, yes. Okay, it's a smaller out the back. So it's the, the drainage is a big concern, okay, but I think it can be taken care of, okay? That's a, that is a small basin, I wouldn't care if the basin were made, the basin were made smaller here and made larger down, further down into the backland, it would solve the same purpose, it would also give an avenue for, for potential parking field out here in an emergency situation. I don't think that's a big thing to ask, especially in light of the, in light of the volume that a successful sports complex will, will draw. And I mean, we got, this does nothing actually for the town but a headache. It has a headache also for the Butters. I'm just trying to eliminate that as much as possible during those four major times of the year, maybe more. Hope it's, hope it's 15 times a year that he has a business. I hope it's 20, it doesn't make any difference to me, as long as he's able to accommodate his own needs on his own site, and he has the area to do that. And I'm just saying, a small modification here, brought out back, they just give the opportunity to extend this further out back for emergency or, or extended parking. And that would alleviate any problem for, for the neighbors. I don't think it'll alleviate all of them because I've been in sports centers, I know they can draw an incredible crowd, and I hope he does, because that's what he's in business for, okay? But I just want to make the, say, I should make the, make the provisions so that it doesn't bother the Butters. And Steve Tomasi does business on Saturday, he does business on Saturday. Steve, he doesn't want to lose his customers because the cars are parked that far away up the street and nobody can get up there.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's just a little bit of common sense at this particular point. You know, it's not, and that's, and those two issues are the two that I'm concerned about. Stephen Tomasi.
Wait, just a second, Tom, has a question.
Quick question. Bill makes a good point about additional parking. How many, how many parking spaces would you require on, at an event?
Well, that says, when I started my presentation, that's what I was saying was, from my perspective, the difficult part, and Bill, when I was talking retail. the difficult part, and, Bill, when I was talking retail, I was just talking, they have a retail store in there, we allocated X number of parking spaces to the retail store based on the square footage, to follow the zoning bylaw. Then on top of that, we added a snack bar and office space, but the tough part is, the, for basically the tournaments, how many do you allocate for the basketball, basically, basically basketball courts? And we came up with a number of one hundred and twenty. Now, I wasn't around, and I have no idea, and maybe we can talk to you after the meeting or something, to get a better idea of how many cars were there. John?
One hundred and twenty on the street, Peter.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not talking about the parking lot.
So, that was last year, I believe, I put this temporary parking in here, and I caught a lot of heat for doing that, just to try to alleviate any overflow onto your property last year, because I know that it was an issue, so I put this in as a temporary, and now and then, I used to rent Zadziewski's spot across the street, also to make sure we didn't have any overflow off the street or your property. We have the signs on the door that they park, over there at Corporate Park, they will be towed.
No, I understand, I understand, that was the, that was the, that was the issue, and you're only getting, you're only getting started then, and I understand. If this is successful, that, if you, if you put a deck on that, you wouldn't have enough parking spaces. And my, my point is, make that provision as inexpensively as possible out and back, so that the town, the Abboters, are not going to be inconvenienced, and the people in the town, the people in the town have a tough time getting up the street, and you have to have a detail out there. I mean, it's, it's easy to fix at this particular point. Later, it's going to be harder, and that's.
We're not increasing the capacity inside, I mean, I'm more, I'm, more parking the better for me.
Yeah.
But.
I'd like to see if it's with the.
Well, if I could just interject for a second?
Yeah.
Because this relates to the parking.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah.
We can't provide any more parking spaces here because of the grade difference over the septic system versus here. This is, this drops from elevation one oh two to one, to ninety, ninety-nine over a course of like eight feet.
I know that, it's about three, about a three, it's a three-foot drop there, Peter, and I understand that. But you can buy anti-parking blocks that are so high, and you could put it across there in a heartbeat, if you really wanted to, and again, we're talking about an emergency, if you want to, but it might solve a problem of another, that's another, that's another thirty-two parking spots right there, if you, and I'm not suggesting.
Well, not the entire length, I mean, I can tell you, I tried to squeeze as many parking spaces as.
And I'm sure you did, and I don't know what you, but I just make that comment, you're up against the building.
The same thing over here, I mean, the more parking spaces, for example, if I was able to get those on here, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. So, I mean, I totally get that parking is a, is a concern. I guess what I have to do, or what we have to do, is see if we can come up with a number that is, I mean, if you, if I'm hearing what you're telling me, that, is it Mr. Tomasi?
Yes.
And Mr. Tomasi?
It was Zadziewski about five minutes ago.
Well, that's what I was, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry.
That's his body. Anyway, some folks, you know, the parking was difficult, it's difficult, because it's unique, I mean, it's a different use. They don't, it's not in most of the textbooks, it's not in the I T E manual, which is that manual that you guys hear so much about as far as generating trips, it's not in it.
Can I interject?
Well, they have to go through the chairman, I'm sorry.
Really? So, so my one question, though, was, the width of the roadways, that's also for fire requirements, right?
Well, it's, it's a requirement of the planning board, it's twenty-four feet.
But that's for safety issues, right? How many, how many spaces are on the lot today for a tournament?
It's about ninety? Yeah, I mean, since we did the temporary, there hasn't been any parking issues at all this year, and last fall, I haven't had to rent this parking lot once, because we've never had a parking space. We're not increasing anything inside at all.
You're adding, you're adding in then seventy, right? Okay, give or take, yeah, I mean.
All right, so we're adding about seventy spaces, all right. Mr. Tomasi?
Stephen Tomasi, Agent Tomasi, there's just a couple of points here. First of all, let's say that John has been extremely cordial to me during the whole process. When they had an issue with the parking on Oak Street, I know the Pembroke Police got involved, but he was out there, but can't park here, can't park here. Now with the no parking situation, it's been alleviated, I think. But anyway, just a couple of points here. And I think Bill made a good point here, if it's possible to pick up the grade change here, maybe some monument block, not necessarily to ninety-degree, but how about parallel parking? Eight feet of pavement? If you've got a three-foot grade change over that, what is that, twenty feet maybe? What are that gradient is there?
It's about, it's about ten feet. Actually, I think it's nine.
Three-foot change of grade.
Well, these are, I'm sorry, these are eighteen, these are about sixty in there.
Okay, well, I mean, is it possible to pick up some parallel parking? I don't know. If you were able to pick up that, divide that by twenty, you'd maybe get another fifteen spaces for that. What about using maybe a grasscrete-type material to get from A to B and have employee parking, or overflow parking back here on a non-permeable material? So that you're not affecting drainage, but you are having, I mean, you, you tell me, John, how many people do you need for employee parking currently? If they're taking up twenty of the spaces, that's twenty less people that give you money on the tournament.
Yeah.
So, you know, and on my busy weekends, I ask my employees not to park in my parking lot. You know, take a bus.
Over there. Park over the corporate park.
Park over the office. That's just, I mean, again, you know, that's just some interjection, my part. I do know that the unstriped parking is a recipe for disaster. People don't know how to park in an unstriped lot, they'll take up twenty-five feet if they have to, they don't want to get their little Lexuses dented and so forth, and so just the striping alone has been probably increased efficiency, I can tell you that right out of the gate. But that's just, I mean.
Mr. Tomasi, have you had a problem in the last six months since they've expanded some of the parking, or is it still a problem?
No, honestly, I haven't, no.
Okay.
His tournaments, I mean, I saw the intensity, honestly, his, his peak was my Valley, so I actually did accommodate him with some, some overflow parking in my facility.
Oh, okay.
And it didn't affect me.
Okay.
You know, my busy season starts, you know, whether the snow melts, until whatever. So, you know, he's doing his tournaments in February, March, and April, not in April, but in February, March.
The best one, too.
Doesn't affect me at all, honestly. It was a nuisance way before the police got involved with the parking in the street, and now with the no parking in Oak Street, it's alleviated that issue. Once in a while, you get some, some cloud there that still wants to push the buttons and park there, and I hope they get towed.
We call, then we park up there, we call.
I think a detail would be a phenomenal thing, I don't know about, you know, an eight-year-old kid with a flag up there, maybe a police officer. I do know that when the, before the parking issue was, when parking was initially instituted with no parking ban on Oak Street, there was a police officer out there telling people you can't park there. And, you know, for the small amount of money it would take to have that detail officer there during those peak periods, even directing people to turn left out of his facility to go down, you're crossing traffic, that alone would be, would be, you know, I mean, turning right out of his parking lot, that's easy. Turning left, you're going to get people coming down, it's a cutoff anyway, it's a, it's a speed trap, that's going to be the bottleneck right there, so.
You know, on larger tournaments, you do get police details, and if they're Pembroke officers, it goes smooth as anything. What happens is you get the sheriffs in there sometimes, and it's just a cluster, you literally have to say, just don't stop, stop the people out in the street, because there'll be one car will pull up and they'll stop everybody here. The Pembroke guys, the police officers, as a cop, I know it, they know when to stop, they got two, three cars, then they'll wave them out. The sheriffs are walking out there all the time, and they back it up more than anything, so.
By bumping out parking on this side here, I know you're taking over your swale and now paving it, and that's necessarily a good thing. I don't know if non-permeable overflow, grasscrete, whatever you want to call it, can be employed, that can be used as that one or two or three times a year when you do need that, that's a possibility, an engineer to discuss with you.
Yeah, you can ask, Peter, I was calling to talk to you, actually, to get more spots in, and when he explained to me, it makes sense, from what he designed, I was like, okay, it makes sense to me.
I think that we are, I mean, it seems, well, have you, since he's added the parking that we claimed in the front, have you guys had issues?
I have not, honestly.
No, I don't, I don't believe we've had any issues in this past year.
I mean, because I, I really don't want to be presenting a plan that there isn't enough parking, I mean, it's just, I mean, from my perspective, obviously. Maybe we could look at doing some, some overflow in the back. How does the board feel about gravel parking? I know that, according to zoning, and I know we've had this discussion on other projects, that, well, it's supposed to be paved, somewhere in the zoning bylaw it says paved.
Does, does grass, grasscrete, which is the permeable pavement?
Yeah.
Does that, does that, is that considered paving, Pete? You're going to grow grass through it?
Well, I don't know. It probably is not, but.
It's imperme, you know, it's not permeable.
Is this the, the water goes through?
No, no.
With the, for the inventor of the board, grasscrete is a proprietary name of a concrete product that looks like egg cottons, if you, it's got solid and void, solid void. You lay it down, and you put soil on top of it, and you spray grass, the grass goes through it. Unless you're looking at it from a down point, you look at it, it looks like grass. It's typically used for fire lanes, for emergency parking, overflow parking, a stadium three times a year, they need parking, there it is, other than that, you mow it.
Yeah, it's, it's a good solution for the rare, for the rare event, not the everyday use, so, I don't think every day.
And it does not increase the surface water drainage, and by the way, it goes right to mother earth.
So, the question is whether we have the authority within our bylaws.
I mean, if, if it's already with the board, what I'd like to do is take a look at the zoning bylaw again, and the regulations, maybe that's an option we could come back with, and it would, it would kind of add some spaces, but, but hopefully not dramatically increase costs, for one thing, and something on drainage.
Peter, how many spaces is this to go?
This is one hundred and sixty-six.
One sixty-six.
And how many spaces is it currently included in the expanded?
I think about ninety.
Yeah.
I mean, the comment was made that unless the, the parking striped, you know, it's a disaster, well, that's actually.
Yeah, we don't usually get nine, because people just park like idiots.
Peter, if you moved that detention basin a hundred feet down onto the, for the property, it would be.
Well, I can tell you, Bill, that, I was going to address it, but this does get the flows coming off the property, both coming down here and down to this swale, below what's happening now. Oh, I'm sorry, below what was happening before these trees were cleared. That's what we used as the existing condition, by the way, was that the only, that this was paved, this was, was grassed and treated. We, we basically took an old Google map, before it was cleared, and used whatever the cover was, I think it was, part of it was grass, and part of it was like brush and smaller type trees.
Okay.
Peter, the reason I suggested that is, you could pick up another twenty parking spaces right there, ten on each side, with a detention basin, if you move the detention basin further down.
Okay, well, that, in light of that, possibly, I was thinking actually, if we were to do something like this.
Yeah, then you can just move it down.
A single, you know, sixty, sixty-four feet wide going up, but this length, and.
You get plenty.
Yeah.
That's a huge cut, though.
Now, the other.
It is a big cut, it's a lot of earth. So, that, I mean, maybe this is a better location, I, I didn't explore it back here.
So, Mr. Murphy also raised the issue of drainage coming from the back of the property onto his property, is that something that you've looked at?
That's been addressed with this.
Okay.
Yeah, we took into consideration the overland, which was coming to the ditch, plus this portion, which was coming down the ditch and going down, we took into consideration that ten-inch pipe, and also the berm, which I think is, what did you say? How deep did you say? When you put that berm in, that embankment, like, it's like four, three feet? Down at the end of the ditch, it used to go into your drainage, your drainage.
Yes, I basically put it up to the original ground, basically what they, whoever did, they basically dug a ditch down and put the spoils on one side, and this made a ditch.
Our existing conditions took that into account, whatever that elevation is, that, where that dam is, and we used the ten-inch pipe at the end of the ditch to use, not ten-inch, twelve-inch H D P E, to see what was happening now. And we're going into that same pipe, not overflowing the pipe, and discharging into the swale down here.
You only got, you only got two-and-a-half feet of freeboard on that.
On the one down the end.
No, no, right there, right here.
This one?
Yeah, there's only, between ninety and ninety-two-and-a-half.
No, this goes from ninety to ninety-six.
I know that, but it's got a, it's got a relief, it has a relief on the spillway that is two-and-a-half, it's on page, now I can't read, what does that say?
Hundred-year.
Yeah, it is.
Page, ten, on page ten, Peter, you got, you got, I think that says ninety at the left side we were here, and that's ninety-two.
Ninety's the bottom, so it starts to flow out, if you, if you can see that.
So, that's the.
It's a, it's a six-inch diameter hole, and then there's two feet, two-and-a-half feet that goes up before there's another discharge.
No, I understand that, and that's my point, that's, that's the only catchment of your half of that whole area.
No, but the elevation of the hundred-year storm comes up to there.
Oh, yeah.
So, the water's that whole depth. You get a little bit of flow, and a little bit more, a little bit more, then more, and then there's where your hundred-year storm is. I mean, Tyler's looking, looked at the calc's, I mean, I don't know if you have the calc's.
I don't.
I'd be happy to give you a copy of the calc's to help drive home the point, but I mean, we did take it in consideration. That's all I can say.
All right, we've run out of time for tonight's public meeting, public hearing. Do we want to adjourn to let Peter have a chance to address some of these issues?
Yes.
At the very least, it's additional parking opportunities.
Additional parking, some concern about make sure we took care of the drainage.
And to address anything in Tyler's letter that we haven't talked about tonight. Tyler, is there anything else specifically that you think we should, I mean, he has your letter, but is there anything else you feel like we need to point out tonight?
Yeah, most of it is important. Other than I had concerns with that final basin, under the extreme storm conditions, that would actually overflow that basin, with just that twelve-inch pipe coming out and going downstream, your calculations indicate that. I'd be interested in talking to you about that.
Okay, yeah, we looked at that, but we'll clear it up.
So, maybe you guys can clear up on that, look, consider some of the comments made on parking, and what's another date we have available for this?
So, Peter, you're not available next Monday, right?
No. I mean, it, it's going to take us a minimum of two weeks to get.
So, I would suggest June fourth, since May twenty-eighth is Memorial Day, it's a holiday, anyway, so June fourth, I guess that, what, wait, sorry.
Do you have anything on the agenda?
So, June fourth, okay, so we have the continued public hearing for Dominic's at six forty-five, June fourth, so we could have this at, maybe seven thirty.
All right, can we have a motion to?
So, I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing until June fourth at seven thirty P M, and that's public hearing for proposed site plan S P three-dash-eighteen, located at three forty Oak Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so this public hearing will be adjourned to June fourth at seven thirty P M, and that'll give the engineers a chance to address some of the points that were raised tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, everybody.
It's great seeing you, son.
How are you, Tom, yeah, nice to see you. Youngster. Younger, I don't know, I love him. I love him, I'm a big fan. I got another, I got to be back here at eight thirty.
You do?
Yeah.
You're here for the Emily Lane?
Huh?
No, no, eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five.
All right, so now we have to open our public hearing for proposed definitive subdivision number eighteen oh two, located at forty-five Taylor Street, entitled Libby's Lane, to consist of five new single-family houses, one existing single-family house, and a new cul-de-sac row. If we look in our packages, we do have a, from Maryland Associates, that we can take a look at.
It's good to see you, how you doing?
Good, good. So, how's, how's Bob doing?
You're here with the engineering plan for?
Correct.
For Libby's Lane?
Yes, right.
He does maintenance, what's that? It's your show now, I guess. Now, my kids are all grown up, we all make a big show.
Oh, are they coming in?
They're good, it's.
Okay.
Assuming they can follow us.
All right.
They usually do.
Are you back in the studio?
Did you guys get a chance to sign in with Matthew?
Yeah.
Thank you, see you.
One of you could go sign in and let him know for a year so that we could...
All right, so thank you.
Have it for the record. We have a new member tonight.
It's a Saturday.
I didn't realize that.
Brand new member, we're still down a member. Which we need to talk about.
I should move over to the chair here, so we're not blocked.
Not part of it, just sort of...
I like you.
Just wanna know what's going on.
Okay. Can I move this up?
He doesn't, you might wanna sit over this way so you can see the board.
And if everybody would just sign in with Matthew, he has a sheet going around. I think somebody's actually sitting in that seat. She moved over just one, so thank you.
Okay, you're fine there.
Yep. He just got up to sign in. Okay, so now that we've opened the public hearing on this proposed subdivision, we'll start with the applicant's engineer giving us an overview of the plan and where we are. Then the planning board will have a chance to ask some questions, and then we will ask anybody here from the public to let us know what your thoughts and concerns might be. Okay? And just if I could ask, do we have people, is to try to direct your questions through the chair? It makes things go a little more smoothly. Okay?
Thank you, Rick Grady from Grady Consulting, along with the applicant, Bob Goslin. Some of you may remember Bob from about eight years ago. We were before you for the Caliopath subdivision that he also developed. This is a proposed subdivision located at 45 Taylor Street. What he is proposing here is to retain the existing house on a lot in the frontier and construct five new houses towards the rear of the property. It's adjacent to another subdivision the planning board had approved not too long ago that's currently under construction, just adjacent to this project and we're somewhat of a mirror image of that project. We do have some wetlands on the property. We have some border and vegetated wetlands to the rear of the property. We have a riverfront area for the Pudding Brook located in this area here. We've got some bordering vegetated wetlands just off the property in this area. And we have an intermittent stream, small little hand-held, hand-dug drainage ditch in this area here. We have submitted to the Conservation Commission. We had one meeting with them so far. They hired a consultant to review the wetland delineation. And we go back to see them, I believe, June 4th or so, to hopefully wrap things up with them at that point. The proposed roadway, starting off Taylor Street in this area here, fairly gentle curve coming into a cul-de-sac. It's approximately 650 feet from Taylor Street to the end of the cul-de-sac. You can see from the profile of the roadway here, gently slopes off of Taylor Street. We have a negative 1% grade coming off of Taylor Street, a low point at approximately Station 2+0, right in this area here to collect runoff from the roadway. Then we come into a little bit of a high area and then a low area at the end of the cul-de-sac, the catch basin in this area here. So we'll be collecting the drainage through a series of catch basins, two catch basins here, as well as a catch basin at the end of the cul-de-sac, which will be routed to a drain manhole, storm scepter, and drainage basin between lots four and five in this area here. The grading for that basin and grading for the roadway is depicted here. We do have a little bit of a cut in the area of about 400 to 500 feet into the roadway, into the subdivision, but no real significant cuts or fills. We did provide a cut and fill plan to the planning board as part of the application. The grading for the detention basin, actually very similar again to the one that was done next door. There is, we are getting some infiltration within that basin and there is an overflow to the rear in this area here. We've submitted drainage calcs for the two 10, 25, 100-year storm events to demonstrate that there's no increase in runoff or the close development condition. We did provide schematic house layouts, demonstrate that the lots can be built upon. We are requesting one waiver for the subdivision. We are requesting to go from two sidewalks to a sidewalk on a single side. We understand that the board would likely be requiring some sort of a payment in lieu of construction of that sidewalk. That is the only waiver that we're requesting. We'll be connecting to town water. We'll have individual septic systems on each of the lots. We do have a letter from Peter Palmieri that we've reviewed and we've begun making some revisions to the plan. I think everything in the letter is pretty straightforward and we really don't have a problem with any of the items that he has requested. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
So the existing dwelling, when we say 19.28 feet from the front lot line? Peter, you mean off of Taylor Street?
Yes.
Okay, not off of the new street?
No.
Okay. So there's no movement from an existing road?
That's right.
So we meet the required front setback to the new subdivision roadway and the existing setback to Taylor Street remains the same.
Anybody have any questions or comments based on what we've seen there? Now we have two Dan's on the board, that's gonna make, it's gonna be Smith and Taylor.
So, one thing maybe, I guess, clarify. So, what you're proposing right now is five new houses and the existing house is also part of the subdivision? Is that, I just wanna make sure I understood that correctly.
So, yes, the existing home is part of the subdivision. However, we did get a buyer on it recently, so we do anticipate submitting an A&R plan to ask the board to endorse that next upcoming meeting.
Does it have enough frontage on Taylor Street?
Yes, it does.
And they don't care that they're not gonna be part of the subdivision in terms of making sure that you guys finish that road correctly and everything?
That might be a better question for Bob, but it won't be part of their property. We will retain a grading easement along the edge of that property in case we need to do any grading there, but...
And their driveway is gonna stay off of Taylor Street?
Correct.
Okay. So they're not gonna be dependent on that street for anything?
No.
Okay.
And I've already showed them the plantings that are going in on that side.
On the side of your house? Peter, is there anything in particular that you think from your letter that we should talk about tonight? Or is it just something that you guys go back and forth on?
No, I think most of the comments are pretty straightforward. A number of planned content issues, but pretty straightforward, so I don't have any concerns.
Did you have a chance to issue or to review Peter's letter?
I did, yes. I don't have any problem with any of the comments that he has and we'll address them to his satisfaction.
Okay. And so now, if nobody has questions, we'll ask folks from the public who came today who might have comments that they want us to consider.
What's the purpose of this meeting?
Could you first?
Mike Tyler on a butter.
And give your address, please, for the record?
31 Taylor Street.
Okay. I'm sorry, what's the purpose of the meeting?
What's the purpose of this meeting?
So, the planning board is the body that's elected by the town to enforce the rules and regulations of the town for building new subdivisions. So our bylaws and our planning control rules set forth, you know, anybody who owns property in town has a right to build according to the bylaws. And this is a residential zone, so they couldn't build, for instance, if someone came in requesting to build a commercial warehouse here, we would say that's not within the zoning bylaws. You have to go to ZBA and see if they'll give you a variance, which I hope they won't. So when they come in with a residential plan that fits the zoning bylaws, there are requirements as to the size of each lot. There's requirements as to the amount of street frontage for each lot. There's some, so the zoning bylaws have some basic requirements that we really can't vary from. If we, if there's a, if the applicant wants to vary from some of those bylaws that have been passed at town meeting, we don't have the authority to do that. That would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance. But they haven't requested any variances. So they've constructed, they've taken the land and it appears from my first review of this that they've come up, so this is a public hearing for us to hear from the applicant, from the abutters, from any member of the public who's interested as to whether there are objections that we should take into account. We have limited authority, right? We can enforce the bylaws. We have our own subdivision rules and regulations which go beyond the bylaws. But because we make those rules, we also have some ability to vary those rules if it makes sense in a specific case. So we might have some rules that are, you know, thought to be the best practices, but there may be some specific cases where we have a little bit of play with those rules.
Those are the waivers.
And that's a waiver. So if there's a waiver requested, like he requested a waiver to only put sidewalks on one side of the street, that's not a bylaw requirement, that's a planning board requirement. And since we're imposing the requirement, we can waive the requirement. Typically, we will, we have a practice of waiving the requirement so long as the developer's willing to put the amount of money it would take to construct the other sidewalk into a town fund to work on sidewalks and other parts of town where they might be more useful. Because having sidewalks on either side in the subdivision is sort of a best practice, but not necessarily a necessity. They're the people marketing their own subdivision. If they don't think they need sidewalks on both sides, we're less wedded to that so long as then the town increases the amount of sidewalks in town by getting the funds available to help us with another project on another street. So that's sort of the difference between the bylaws that we're trying to implement and the rules and regs. Our board tries to be a little bit more rule-bound, as much as we can be, that we're looking at it, we're trying to look at it as objectively as we can and say, okay, what are the rules? What are we allowed to say? What are we not allowed to say? What are our findings? And do we approve the project or not? And then we issue our opinion after a series, usually a couple of public hearings. And we have our own town engineer who provides us comments to their engineer. And the applicant pays for our town engineer to review those plans. So the applicant who wants to come in with a plan to build a new subdivision has to give us the funds to pay for the town to have someone who's looking out for the interest of the town and enforcing our rules and regulations fairly and evenly. And tonight, that person who's representing the town on the engineering side is Peter Palmieri of Maryland Engineering on this project. So he submits a letter to the board so that we get that input. And then the other engineer has a chance to respond to that and try to improve the plan. So our goal is to first decide if the plan meets the bylaws and our rules and regulations, and if it doesn't, to decide whether we believe a waiver is in order. Or if there's a bylaw that we think is violated, we'll send them back to the ZBA and say, first you have to go get a waiver or, I mean, a variance or special permit or whatever is required there before you come back here for cycling or subdivision approval in this case.
So, once this, if you approve it, does destruction start?
Once we approve it, there's a, there's a...
20-day...
20-day appeal period. So what happens is, once we approve it, assuming we approve it, we issue conditions generally that are part of our approval. So frequently when we approve it, we say, we approve it, but with these conditions. You have to fix these things that we had a concern with. And then, once we issue that decision with the conditions, that opinion gets filed with the town clerk and then there's a 20-day period in which anybody can appeal it to a subdivision? They appeal directly to Land Court or they appeal to the ZBA?
Court, court, Land Court.
Land Court. So somebody, anybody who feels that they're injured by the project can appeal to Land Court if they have standing as a person who's injured by the project.
Does the planning board control the stripping of the land?
We control it insofar as we require a landscape plan to talk about how they're gonna landscape the plan after the fact.
Street trees, for instance.
And we control, in some ways, for example, when the engineer was going through the plan, he was showing us how they're gonna grade the road. So that'll affect how they're going to move the earth and adjust the grading to create that road.
But that's also a good question for the applicants in here on how much of the existing vegetation are you planning to maintain as part of the subdivision?
So on Sheet 5 of the subdivision set, we provided what I consider the necessary grading for the roadway. And as part of that, we have included a proposed tree line, which is a different tree line than we're showing on the housing schematic, because our preference is to not go in and clearcut the entire property. Would only like to cut what's necessary for the roadway. And then each of the individual lots can determine what needs to be cut for one lot at a time. So that gives us a better chance of controlling the vegetation. We wanna save what we can. And it's a logical way to approach it.
Now, are you selling off lots then to other people to build? Is that the plan?
They intend to build, yeah.
You intend to build?
I'll build them all.
Okay. So you'll decide how you're gonna carve out the house area based on what your customers want to build?
House style, grading.
But isn't that, Rick, the grading plan for the lots is what you're gonna be bound to? Is that correct?
For the individual lots, no, because those could change. I think as far as the subdivision goes, we're certainly willing to hold the tree line that we're proposing on Sheet 5. Once we get to the individual lots, it's a little bit of a different story because we need more information. We need to know where the successful perk tests are. We need to know what the buyer wants for a house. Are they gonna wanna pool? Are they gonna wanna shed? So there has to be a little more flexibility on the lot side of it.
What is that yellow line?
The yellow line, we highlighted actually for the Conservation Commission. So anything within that yellow line is a hundred-foot buffer to conservation.
And where's the tree line on the back of the property? Is it on there?
Easy as, yeah.
But that little line is the tree line that's staying?
Correct, yeah, for the individual lots, yeah.
So there won't be a tree line around the entire subdivision?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're only gonna clear what's necessary.
And that helps with marketing the properties as well.
Well, I have people now that have approached me about building there, but I won't commit to anybody till I can walk their lot with them and show them what, and see what they wanna build. And I would admit, I would probably very, I could probably very easily say there's gonna be trees between the houses as well. Because we try and keep anything within a certain size. You know, pines, you can tend to, but the hardwoods, we'll try and keep whatever we can. If you go in any of my subdivisions, you'll see that we've kept as many as we can.
And Caliopath is actually a really good example of that because he had a situation there where the topography kind of said, maybe we should consider gravel removal here. But he didn't wanna do that because he didn't wanna ruin the tree cover, which is a very similar approach to what he wants to take here.
Is that a stipulation in the agreement with the building? Is that, do you stipulate land stripping?
Only in as far as what he needs to do to get the grade in, the grading in for the subdivision for which he's planning on continuing to keep a tree line around that before the, each lot is sold. But we're giving him some leeway on each lot there. Obviously, we don't tell him what trees to take down and what not to take down because he's gonna customize that for his potential home buyers.
But we would be approving the plan as presented, which means that he's preserving some amount of trees in the back of the property as a builder. Now, you never know what a later homeowner might do. But he's, but you don't know that about any of your neighbors. But he's preserving...
The tree line.
The tree line, and that becomes part of the approved plan that they'd be building according to, right?
If I might add to, trust me, the people that are building new houses, they wanna keep as much privacy as you've been used to. So they don't wanna see it clearcut.
Yeah, I've seen some subdivisions do a better job and a worse job of that, quite honestly, in our town. I was just talking to someone the other day and there are two subdivisions that I won't name, and one of them clearcut and sort of denuded the land.
Yeah, there's one on Taylor Street they did that.
Well, I'm not talking, I'm talking a different part of town.
Oh, okay.
You know, not to call out anybody, but a different part of town. And the street, the subdivision one street over, it took a very different approach. And I think that the, you know, it's night and day.
Yeah, that's why, but I'm a good...
We're not opposed... We're, we're not opposed to a condition that, um, kind of repeats what's already on the plan, but we're not opposed to a condition that says we'll follow the tree line for the subdivision roadway as depicted on sheet five. Just to provide you a level of comfort that we're confident we weren't clear cut it. Uh, this is a realistic tree line that is depicted on sheet five for the roadway and the drainage and...
Okay.
You could certainly write that into the conditions.
So is your, is your approval going to be tonight? And, and do you do that before it gets through conservation?
So if we do, I don't know that we'll approve it tonight because there were some things he was going to address from Peter's letter that we may want to see another set of drawings on. Um, so, uh, I can't speak for the board. I mean, we'll find out if the board wants to approve it, but usually, you know, it may take a second public hearing. Um, if we approve something before a conservation commission has approved it, then our approval would be subject to, one of the conditions we would put in place is that the plan as approved by us would have to be approved by conservation. And if there were substantive changes made, that it would have to come back to us for any of those changes. So we don't necessarily hold our decision until conservation, but there's no building permit issued until conservation has signed off and will sign off. So we don't, we, you know, while we take into account the impact, the conservation impact to some extent, we don't do the detailed conservation analysis that conservation commission does. So we, we kind of have an expertise there that they rely on, and we have an expertise here where we have engineers who are looking at a lot of drainage issues. Um, we look at the landscape issues, we look at the safety issues, we want to make sure that the water comes out onto the roadway is safe. Um, those are the kind of issues we focus on for the most part. Um, impact on the abutters, the fact that they're maintaining enough tree line to, to minimize some of the impact on the abutters is something that we are grateful for, and we try to make sure it happens in any site plan, even a commercial site plan. We look at buffering between commercial sites, but we're more sensitive to it in a residential area than in a commercial area. So I take it your concern is that they're going to be cutting a lot of properties, a lot of...
Fuck, face, uh, Tim, abutter.
Sorry?
To Garper, Nineteen Taylor.
Thank you.
They just, excuse my language, raked the land. It's just gone.
Where?
Uh, right next to where he's building. They just, it's, it's all gone. So it's just, and now they're bringing in soil, I mean, day in and day out, trucks coming just to build it up, so it just, we don't want to see that even close to our house, I guess is what we're saying. You know, I was, it was good to hear that he said he wasn't going to strip the land like they did, because that's just, oh, that's crazy, in my opinion, to say. And I, I did have another question about the drainage, because, uh, thirty yards down the road across the street, that floods year round.
Yeah.
So I was just wondering if, you're the engineer, is it good for that one degree thing? Because we'll have a skating rink across his house and the neighbor's house for his...
Where, what area are you talking about?
Taylor Street.
Taylor Street, and you, you said there was a one percent slope going down?
Oh, that's adequate, sure.
Okay. Would you, would you better than adequate?
Well, I mean, it's according to the regulations.
Okay.
And is, is your concern that it'll, it'll, it won't drain?
Right.
You're afraid it'll open onto Taylor Street, right?
He's coming into his site, he's not coming out on...
Yeah, the idea is to keep all the water on that site.
Okay. So the, so the stormwater regulations require that a new developer keep their water on their property, and that they don't build in a way that creates more flooding on nearby streets or properties. That's, that's Peter's main job for us, is making sure that that's, those calculations are true.
Occasionally, you'll see a roadway coming into a subdivision where we're heading uphill, and then we have the concern that we are draining towards the existing street and have to put some catch basins at the entrance. This one, we're draining from Taylor Street downhill the entire way, so nothing's going to be...
So the, uh, storm drains on the road go into the retention pond?
No. Oh, the proposed road or the existing road? The proposed road, yes, into the detention pond, yes.
So all of the water is going to be directed down the road and through the detention, through the drains, down to that basin between lots four and five?
That's correct. And we won't be adding anything to Taylor Street.
Could you describe what a catch basin looks like?
Sure, if you, once it's all finished, it's the two foot square grates that you see on the edge of the road in the gutter. That, that's the catch basin, right? So it's a larger structure underneath the ground, it's about five foot diameter, typically about six feet deep.
Okay.
So you remove some of the sediments and everything at that point, then the water continues on to be discharged.
Okay. Um, would you just give your name to that?
I'm sorry, yes, it's Susan Tyler, and I'm at thirty-one, Taylor Street.
Thank you.
Um, I'm very concerned about the safety of the road, and I have been. I mean, we've been residents for, um, thirty-one, pushing thirty-one years now. Um, and when they did developments across the road and up a little bit from where this is proposed, um, ever since that has happened, for the entire winter, starting in November, half of, uh, Taylor Street is frozen from numbers ninety-six to number sixty-six Taylor Street are covered in ice all winter long. There is a, um, the town does leave a, um, a big barrel there with salt, um, and sand on it, but I don't know that anybody ever puts it on the street. But I have concerns now that we're putting in yet another division where people are going to be coming out at the bottom of the Taylor ice path. Um, and it's also, those driveways at the top of that street are blind driveways as well, at the top of the, the, what do you call that thing? That the big rock ledge there. So I mean, that was never addressed, and all those houses were built there at one point in the time that I've been living there. Um, and then all that water runoff just goes along the street. So now we're going to have six more houses at the bottom of the hill.
The ice patch was mentioned at the last hearing we had, before that was even...
That, that was on the, the opposite side of the street.
It is.
Where, where the water comes off the ledge and runs down the gutter. And that's, that's an issue that, that these folks can't, can't be concerned with because it's not, and nothing that they've done that has added to it.
I understand that.
You know?
I'm, I'm just concerned about that much more traffic coming out onto Taylor Street with, in addition to the new six lots that are, so from this subdivision, there's the house, the Geisel house that just sold, and then the new house that Mr. Goslin just built. And then six houses are going in where they rake the land, and that's all in that same spot where the road is very dangerous and very icy. So I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Um, so when you looked at the, uh, site distances and the entry onto Taylor Street, did you take into consideration the icy conditions that seem to be occurring on this road? Through no fault of your own or your client, but, um, did you take into account those conditions when you were looking at the traffic impact?
The, the short answer is no, we didn't. As far as the proposed intersection, uh, we do have adequate site distances in both directions, and that's one of Peter's comments to add that to the plan as well.
How long is it going to take, you, Rick, to, uh, give us answers to Peter's comments?
Uh, about a week.
So I, I guess when I say adequate site distances in both directions, I understand that it's not this subdivision creating a more dangerous condition, but when we look at site conditions, if someone at sixty-six Taylor Street is going to be not able to break because of icy conditions, is there enough stopping distance between sixty-six Taylor Street and forty-five Taylor Street to not end up with an increased risk of accident on that road?
Well, I, I think, when you go through a site distance calculation, you assume that the road is safely maintained.
Right.
The main road. Um, I, I, quite honestly, I'd have to do research to see if there's even a...
A reg.
Uh, well, a, a methodology to take into consideration ice.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's the extraordinary condition.
Yeah.
Now, maybe, maybe if the DPW was aware of it, they can, they can, um, address the accumulation of ice better. I don't know where the ice is coming from. From what Tom said, it seems like it's sheeting off some ledge.
It is.
That's a difficult condition to deal with.
Well, it is, and the DPW seems to not...
They don't have any money.
They don't have any money, they don't have an ability to fix that condition on Taylor Street. So the question I have is whether or not we'll be approving plans that are going to end up with a hazard that we're not taking into account, because it's the town's obligation to keep Taylor Street free of ice, but it sounds like if they're leaving a barrel there, that we're not doing it.
Uh, it's just going to exasperate a bigger problem.
But on the other hand, you know, you know, I, and our issue is that we have regulations, and somebody has a right ostensibly to develop their land in accordance with those regulations. So we're trying to balance things here, and I'm just not even sure how we address a potential safety concern that's caused by the town not maintaining the road itself.
Or abutting properties, not this.
Right, or abutting properties.
It wouldn't have to be the applicant's issue, though.
It's not their issue.
Well, because, well, the applicant's increasing traffic on a road where we're creating another exit point where people may be hit because there's not enough stopping distance.
Well, it's a five, it's a five-home subdivision. I mean, materially, it's not going to add significant traffic. Um, I think the thing to think about for this particular subdivision is where the icing occurs in relationship to what the available site distance is. It may be a non-issue. I don't know where the houses are that we're talking about. Um, the, the site distance is a function of the speed on the road. Um, if, if the area that ices up is beyond, beyond what the necessary site distance is, then it's a non-issue.
Right.
So I think once we have the, the distance on there, I'm, I have an idea, in my mind, it's adequate site distance. That's why I asked that the plan be revised to show the distance, then when we take into consideration what the, the speed on the road is, uh, the posted speed plus, plus the actual traveling speed, we'll have an idea, and, and maybe it's a non-issue, maybe it's something we need to think about, but, um, I, I think it's a necessary piece of information we need.
Okay.
I was building that house on the Form A lot all winter, and where you come down around the corner, the ice is up almost in front of where the other subdivision is going, and the ice was never down in front of the house that I'm building. The, the DPW just got through repairing the two catch basins in front of forty-five because it collapsed, um, but the ice never got down to that point. The ice was always up, fur- further up than the house that I'm building on the Form A.
The water runs all the way, excuse me, um, Bill Keeler, Fifty Taylor, abutter. The water runs all the way down the road to, to those catch basins at the time repaired.
Right.
Which is right in front of forty-five, and it ices up when it's cold.
Well, I didn't go with that.
I understand that subdivision, subdivisioners don't have responsibilities, they're downstream, basically. But at what point does someone say, this is an unsafe road, we have to halt construction until it gets fixed?
Well, I'm not sure you can halt construction until it gets fixed, but certainly should be talking to the DPW about it, and I know you have, and I know the answer that you got, which is unfortunate, but I, I would continue to talk to the DPW about that, because if there is a dangerous condition on that road, it should be addressed, should be addressed by the town.
What leverage do we have?
I don't know.
Because, I mean, you, you just stated a moment ago that, you know, that you didn't think five new homes are going to materially affect the traffic, but we just approved another subdivision just up the street of six.
True.
And then there's another one going in now. I mean, you know, wh- where's the limit?
Yeah.
Um, well, Peter...
The, the limit is the available land to build on, I guess.
Well, could I, could I ask?
I'm sorry, you have the...
I'm sorry, Susan Tyler, I'm at thirty-one. So if that, um, you had said that the builder would, um, give money to the town for the, for the waivers or whatever that they had had?
For the sidewalk fund.
For the sidewalk.
Okay, so could the sidewalk fund be earmarked to make a trench on Taylor Street there to take care of that?
I don't, I don't, I don't think, I think it's designated funds for sidewalks. I don't think we have that ability to move it over for road maintenance.
I think we're lucky if, if it gets used for sidewalks at all.
No, I think it does get...
No.
Really?
I haven't seen a lot, I haven't seen a lot of new sidewalks built in Pembroke outside of this group.
We have a sidewalk fund, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, it goes into fund, and then eventually DPW takes it, and I believe they use it for sidewalks.
What sidewalks would those be? The only two street in town that has a sidewalk on it is Water Street, and I don't know how they got it.
Oh, no, they just used, the DPW just used money because they used, uh, town money to do Habumac Street. That was, uh, that was town money, as opposed to Route fourteen is mostly state money.
State, right, right.
But, but Habumac was town money.
Selectmen are usually the only ones that can move money from one plant to another.
Or town meeting.
Or town meeting.
Yeah, they can take money from the sidewalk fund, the town meeting.
But it is, if it is a significant icing issue, I mean, the DPW should be paying attention to it.
Yeah, or even the Board of Selectmen. I know when people were concerned about trucks on Valley.
That's true, too, right?
They went right to the selectmen.
That's true, too.
Have you guys been to the Board of Selectmen asking for their help in this issue of icing?
No, I've spoken to DPW.
It, sometimes the Board of Selectmen, because they control the budget in a lot of ways, and sometimes the Board of Selectmen, if they have enough people who come to them with a problem, they can budget money for that problem.
And they answer to the voters, too.
And they answer to the voters directly, so that might be...
Let's ban together.
Another option.
Let's do that.
To get that road fixed, because, and I think that the developer probably wants to make sure that road gets, you know, people are going to like to buy on a safer road than on a road that's less safe.
I've noticed as well, too, I'm, I'm sorry, but, um, since the truck traffic on Oak Street has been banned, Taylor Street is now experiencing so much more truck traffic. And it's, I don't know if you've, if you're familiar with the road, but it's a very, it's one of the oldest roads in town, so it's a very narrow winding road. It probably was a cow path originally.
But it's a great shortcut from one thirty-nine over to Pembroke.
It's also one of our scenic ways.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's also, I think that...
Oh, so, so because it's a scenic way, that also means that any changes that have to happen on the way, um, that would affect, um, trees...
Trees and rock walls.
And rock walls have to come back for a special hearing before the planning board, because we're supposed to protect scenic ways differently than regular public ways.
Does it make sense to go before the selectmen and request an article at the special town meeting in the form to appropriate money to repair the road? That way, the voters get to, to look at it, they can decide whether yank or then. Uh, I was very surprised that the voters at town meeting approved the article for the override, but the voters at the election did not.
Right.
But, and that's...
Anyway. It's eight o'clock. We digress, that's a different debate. But I, I do think that the, um, that we have a limited ability to fix a roadway like that, right? Um, and it's not directly adjacent, you know, if there's something right in front of this, you know, we could say, okay, come out on it more smoothly, but we can't really require the applicant to fix a public road. So there, I think, you know, the Board of Selectmen could be helpful in, um, in trying to get that fixed.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are these the catch basins where the bump was that we just repaired? Is anybody on that?
Yes, yeah, those are.
So, I mean, theoretically, with this repair, it should be intercepting the water before it gets to that subdivision anyways.
But would that be...
But it's ice all the way to there, because that, within their sight line or whatever?
So, so what you're saying is that there's ice on...
This was just a big repair, a huge bump all winter. Uh, I don't know, we got it...
They had steel plates on it for a while.
Yeah. So this is on the uphill side, right?
Yes.
So the water is coming out here and running down.
Correct.
And that's...
Goes all, all the way to that basin.
Yeah. It should be getting, should be done when it gets to this repair, theoretically. So how long has the repair been active?
I remember the big bump all winter, right? So... Yeah, it was all done.
Do you know when the repair was done?
It was...
It was a couple of months ago. It was, it was, it was functional right up until the time that they put a plate over it, it just, um, it collapsed, it, it became a sinkhole.
So after the collapse and the sinkholes, when the icing, icing situation?
No, it's, 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 it's been ice all winter, every year.
Every, but then the DPW, I believe, right? Wanted to dug it all up and hopefully.
Right, to repair a broken pipe.
Yeah.
So if that's repaired and now that water running downhill may have someplace to go, will that improve the situation on Taylor Street?
No.
Why not?
May, may I show you a map of the street?
Yes.
Can I do that?
Or, or right there.
Well, it's up higher though.
Oh, okay.
If I meant, okay, this is, this is the property that's being built on, okay? We're here, so this is where the road is going to go and, and this is where the houses are going. From this point down, this is, there is a ledge here that's right up onto the edge of the road, right about there. And that, the water comes off the ledge, the town did try to remediate it with, um, smaller pieces of like this big rock there that runs right to the side, but the water just flows right off onto the street, so much so that if you don't want to go on the rock, you have to go on the opposite side of the street. And that is an uphill climb at that point and this is, this is blind, that's a blind curve there.
Yeah, where this house is, you're saying that, that driveway out there is kind of blind, right?
So, so the problem is, is up in here?
Is up in here, right, from here to about there, this is where, this is all ice. And I'm not talking just like it's slick because the water just keeps running and keeps refreezing, so you'll have pieces, you know, bodies of ice that are this tall, you know, for extended periods.
And the catch basins are right here?
Yes.
Sort of almost past the point where the greatest problem is.
So just to confirm, you, you said the worst area is ninety-six to sixty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
So the question then for, for, for this hearing is whether or not this road to sixty-six is enough stopping distance considering the fact that they may not be able to start stopping until the ice eases up.
That ice can, that water can go all the way down to those basins at forty-five. It gets a little bit better down toward forty-five because the sun hits it in the wintertime, but up, up where she's talking about, the sun never touches it all winter long and that's why it's so bad.
All right, so, um, so we'll, we'll take that into consideration, but I also would say that trying to get, trying to get some, um, vocal, um, hearings before the Board of Selectmen may also help with getting some money designated to, because that's going to take some work to fix that problem. And I think the DPW feels like they don't have money, so going to them, they just look at you and say, we don't have money, but if you go to the Board of Selectmen, you might have a better chance of getting it addressed. Um, and we'll take into consideration as best we can whether we need to improve any of the site distances given the fact that you have an unusual road condition coming into your site.
We'll, we'll defer on saying that we don't think we have an unusual road condition, that we do have an accepted town public way. We will look at the issue though.
Okay. Fair enough. So we are out of time for tonight. I take it we are not ready to issue a decision unless someone else is?
No. Okay. Um, what do we have on June, are you gonna, you're gonna be before the conservation commission on June fourth, right?
I believe that's the date.
Have we just set a hearing at seven thirty on June fourth for Oak Street?
Yeah, we can do another hearing.
So you want to do eight fifteen?
Yeah.
Well, if you have seven, a hearing with conservation.
What time is it?
What time's your con come meeting?
I'd have to check it, I think it's, uh, early.
Seven ten.
Seven, oh, seven ten, thank you.
So you should be done by eight fifteen, so you can come over here, it'll be efficient because you won't have to come town hall once.
Sounds good.
And we can, um.
Well, so that, I mean, that works fine, the only thing to be aware of is we already have two, two public hearings on June fourth. Um, personally, I don't have any objections to doing three, but that is a lot of, um, we may stay, we may want to stay in the.
What's the, what's the other one?
So the, the continued for Dominick's Way, is it six forty-five?
Okay. Six forty-five, Dominick's.
And then seven thirty is, is what's then.
And eight fifteen, I think as long as we keep the agenda fairly free other than those three, we should be okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that may be tough just because inevitably some things will come up, um, but I'll try to keep this free. I mean, the, the following week I'm going, I'll be on vacation and then the Monday before is tomorrow.
I don't see any problems having three public hearings in a row.
Give it a shot.
All right, so do we have a motion to continue this public hearing to eight fifteen on June fourth?
So moved.
Second.
And that's public hearing for proposed definitive subdivision number eighteen oh two located at forty-five Taylor Street and entitled Libby's Lane. So we'll have another open meeting on June fourth at eight fifteen, well, all of our meetings are open meetings, we'll have another public hearing, which is a more specific type of meeting.
I wish you'd all in favor of that.
Eight fifteen on June fourth, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I do forget to do that sometimes.
Quick question for you, is June fourth your next meeting? And the reason I ask is, okay, we're submitting the A and R for the house lot, so I'm just curious about timing on that. Oh, we'll have that here for that meeting.
Well, wait, we, no, we're meeting, um.
We're meeting next week.
Next Monday, yeah.
We have a meeting next Monday, if it's just an A and R.
Okay.
We might be able to fit that next Monday?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
All right, we'll get it over in the next day or so.
Okay. And then maybe then that, maybe after the A and R, then, I don't know if you adjust the plan then to affect that.
Well, the ironic thing is that we were going to divide the house lot based on the definitive because this is different than the original A and R, now we want to re-make the A and R to look like this, so.
Okay. Um, so an A and R is an approval not required plan, because they have sufficient furniture on a public way, we actually do not have the authority if it meets those furniture requirements and the rest of our subdivision requirements, we don't really have the authority, it says our, the approval of the planning board is not required because it meets all of the bylaws of the town. And so that's not a public hearing because they're really, I mean, it's a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing because as long as we certify that it meets certain requirements, we really don't have any discretion.
So with the A and R, you're not going to approve the rest of subdivision that'll take place on the fourth?
Correct.
Right. Our, our hearing to consider any changes to the subdivision will be on the fourth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you for your, uh, having.
Every now and then we'll get the big meeting, but not very much.
I got it.
See, I read you this.
So we have a discussion of Lori Muncy and or Lisa Sullivan of the All Colony Planning Council about possible projects for which to use the district local test called assistance grant funding.
But I don't think they're kind of just staying here.
That one's mine.
Um, that's quite easy when you come here from on, that's quite easy, that's quite. Just come in.
All right.
Matthew, are they coming today?
Yeah, so.
Or should we start in routine matters first?
So they, uh, actually, we, we're moving them back, they, they contacted me, we contacted each other, um, and, uh, they're pushing it back to July because they're, I was telling any of us before, because they're working on the thing.
So they're basically, they're not.
All right.
They're not coming.
So they're not coming?
Yeah, they're not coming today, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And so I had a, um, I actually talked with, uh, I think Bob Fetus is his name, oh, here he is, right here, uh, and he's, I originally had him down for eight forty-five, but since it's not like a concern, I assume he could, we could do him earlier.
Let's finish this sucker up.
And so.
Wait, I'm sorry, what are we finishing up?
This is just for two sixty-two Oak Street, just to sign the building permit.
Recycling number SP two dash seventeen. Do we have, did we approve conditions on that one already?
Oh, yeah, that was approved a while ago.
I have no idea what we're talking about right now.
The decision and conditions, that's the, the two, it had a, it's like the two buildings, um, that Brian Murphy brought us, um, sort of near Russell Fields property over there on Oak Street, I mean, I'm sorry, on Corporate Park and Red.
Did we ever get the front part cleared up on that? Wasn't the front part supposed to be cleared up before there was building on that?
That's phase two, I think.
No.
No, we had asked for there to be, it was part of the.
Oh, that's true, yeah, yeah.
Do you have the conditions for this?
Yeah, I've got them, yeah, I mean, they have it for the sidewalk.
Yeah, can we pull the conditions for that?
Madam Chairman, are you all set, um, by attendance?
I don't remember, do you have anything else before us tonight?
I don't know.
Um, this, uh, we have a building permit for a lot on Emily Lane and a discussion about Stone Meadow Farm definitive subdivision.
And that's, yeah, that's how it ends, I think.
That's how it ends? Okay, then I think you're good to go. Thank you, Peter.
Good night, thank you.
Give the conditions for this meeting.
Yes, so.
We have some minutes that you guys can be taking a look at in your packets for the thirteenth, the twenty-third and the thirtieth of April and we're going to be trying to have people who attended those meetings let us know if they have any concerns and then we will have to kind of try to vote as a board because we probably don't have, we may or may not have the form of people who attended.
We do actually, we do want to, I actually probably draw this for that too. Um, yeah, I mean, I think they had, they were supposed to do the, the sidewalk along.
Can we do two things at once, can I make motions to approve minutes at the same time? I'll hold.
Just wait one second. So can, do we have the, the site plan, um, as revised on June thirteenth? Cause I, I thought in specifically that we were going to have the, um.
Yeah, I think it's just a question of at what time was the condition that they should build the sidewalk and some others?
I thought we had discussed if we went back and I thought we had specifically discussed having the sidewalks landscaping and fencing done according to this plan in phase one so that it would be a clean look that we were trying to remedy on the site.
Is this property referenced in the lawsuit?
I don't think this is.
Russell, between Russell Field and.
I don't think that Mr. Field has sued them for anything regarding their.
Well, we're being sued.
We're being sued for the neighboring property, but not.
It's a neighbor, not this one.
Not this one.
But by the applicant.
We're being sued by the applicant on a different matter, but not on this matter.
So this is, um.
So. Yeah, in phase one, we were supposed to fill and regrade the area with clean borrowed material seed and regraded area in phase one. And I thought we specifically.
And I believe also to go to sidewalk.
Yeah, and I thought we were supposed to get the sidewalk in phase one so that this ended up being cleaned with a fence before we ended up, and then it would just be a clean slate before we ended up, um, you know, providing everything that's wanted here. The idea was, okay, but we want this to be cleaned up because that was what was in violation to begin with, because this had been cleared without approvals and we said, okay, but clean it up, fill and regrade it, put in the, the fence, like clean this up as part of this phase one.
Yeah.
And I guess what I'd like to hear from the applicant is the timing on that.
We had that here under condition one. So they're all in there.
So what is the timing of that?
Well, that's conditioned under condition one.
So when, when, when you guys were in here to get this plan approved, it was after this area in front had been kind of made a mess right on Oak Street and we made a specific condition that if we were going to grant this, that that area be cleaned up as part of phase one. And I haven't seen that that's been completed.
Well, um, I'm, this is my first time coming in front of the board in years and I'll tell you from what my perspective is.
Yeah.
And I know, and I'll go back four years, probably, and maybe even longer than that, I initially came into the planning board and asked if I could cut the trees on the property to encourage the development of the site. I did not do that because of economy, I had a thirty-five percent vacancy at Corporate Park at that particular time, but I also owned this particular piece of property and I, and I, and I intended to go forward and time passed. And then my son came in and, and a couple of years later, after that, and made a request to cut the trees down again.
I, I think you actually asked to cut that trees in a different part.
It wasn't until, it wasn't until the trees were cut down that there was an issue. And, and he came into the board, he came into the board indicating that he had approached the planning board regarding cutting the trees and got permission to do that.
Uh, but I, I will disagree with you, sir, that I was here at the time and the petition, and the discussion that we had was with regard to some property that you have at the back of Corporate Park, that he had some interest in possibly making more attractive for a hotel development and that, or.
A box store or something.
A box store or something.
But it's still not.
That's a long time ago.
But it still wasn't a safe plan.
I know, but that issue is not relevant to the issue.
Well, the point is, the point is, it was clean, it was after the approval was granted, the whole place was stumped and removed, all the stumps removed, the material was brought up, uh, was, um, the site was graded to accept a berm around the edge and the rough area with the sidewalk is, is graded to, to go in. And, uh, uh, it is a phenomenal burden to put on two little buildings to go, going up from the back, two little buildings to go up from the back to require all of the improvements that would be required for the entire site to be burdened by.
So do you want to reopen our site plan review because that was the condition that was in here?
Yeah, it, it was to be completed, I don't believe it was to be completed, never was completed first, it's completed, uh, certainly before the, uh.
Phase one.
All the buildings would be put up, but, uh, there's going to be some reason associated, there's a ton of money to go into putting sidewalks and to put, uh, put landscaping and a fence.
We were told that that would be done in phase one when we approved this plan.
Yes, but, uh, uh, I, I understand that, but I thought you were, you were, I think, uh, Mr. Fetus isn't here this today for regarding signing off on a building permit. I mean, we can't have all this work done prior to getting a building permit. We can't get financing or anything for this.
But we're here to remind you that the, um, work that was agreed to here was part of phase one, which is the two buildings that you're getting the building permit for. So we're asking that you take that in consideration as we agree to sign the permit.
Well, we have, we have to, we have to take it in consideration because if it's, if it's.
No, no, you understand that if the sidewalk is not done and the fence is not done and the grading and reseating is not done, you will not get an occupancy permit for those buildings.
Would you like the entire, would you like us to just pack up and do nothing down there? It is very, very difficult.
Look, we, we spent hours with the site plan review and that was the promise that was made to this board and that's a condition of our decision. So if you do not want to adhere to that condition, then you need to come in with a new site plan review and a new public.
No, I don't have any, I don't have any problem adhering to it, there's some of the, if some of the items that are on there, which you've just mentioned here now, I don't think, and I guess my son had agreed to that, I, I don't have a problem with that. But you want, you've got to understand, I, I need that, I, I certainly would not be able to do that prior to getting a building permit, we already got a foundation.
No, I'm not asking you to do that.
I, I want you to be absolutely clear though that those will be required before you get an occupancy permit.
I, I understand, the fence is a, is a, is a big item, but I, I.
The fence and the sidewalk and the grading, I mean, quite honestly, I go by that site and I still don't think it's made to look that nice.
But again, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a site in the process of development, I mean.
Right, but what your son had promised us is that in part of developing it, he would make it look nice in the meantime.
I always, my sites always look nice, Corporate Park is the best.
This site does not always look nicer.
Well, it has always looked nice. The only, only reason it was a, it was a disaster area was because somebody stopped us in the middle of, of, uh, of construction. It was a, it was a, the trees were cut down at that particular point and it looked terrible. But it wasn't, it, it wasn't because we wished to leave it that way, we were in the process of, of, uh, developing it, which we thought we had permission to do and.
So what is your timeframe in terms of building the buildings and finishing this site work to make this property, um, adhere to this site plan?
Well, it's going to take us probably another three to four months to build the buildings.
Okay.
Okay? And, uh, I had hoped to get the sidewalk done and the, uh. Okay, and, uh, I had hoped to get the sidewalk done and the, uh...
I thought they were just...
Sidewalk done and the trees installed.
Were just going to come in and go on paths? I don't know.
In a lot of part of the summer.
When are you going to be looking to get your occupancy permit?
I don't know, Tom. I really don't. We want to get the buildings complete.
No, I understand.
I'm saying four months.
So, so in that four month period...
There's a lot of work to be done before you get there.
But you've, you've got to follow the conditions that Brian agreed to.
Well, my concern is that we're going to get to October and you're going to be looking for an occupancy permit and it's going to be more difficult to finish some of this work.
Well, I, I understand that and I, I'm very conscious of what you're saying now and I, but I, and... The burdens were very hard on that, on that site and it was brought about principally because of an abutter who, who raised hell with the board and me. And the abutter was the one that frankly caused all the problem, the unsightlyness on the site. That wasn't our doing. I happen to be somebody that builds buildings and brings taxable dollars into the town. My, my abutters aren't doing that.
They're still...
They're creating, they're creating eyesores for the town, that's all.
So...
I can't do that on a vacuum. I can't build anything on a vacuum there.
Well, I'm not going to get into the subject of the lawsuit. But I will say that during the hearing on this specific site plan, we understand what you're saying and we, I don't think we were unreasonable in what we asked for, for the town's protection, that there was a pre-existing condition of trees on this lot that were cleared without any regard for whether a buffer would be left up against another pre-existing condition. Those, those containers were on that property before this land was clear cut. And if you guys had come to us for a site plan next to another commercial site, we most likely would have required that some amount of buffering trees be maintained, some buffering vegetation be maintained. That didn't happen.
I have to buffer my abutters eyesore? My, my abutter should have, he should have, he should have buffeted his.
Well, that's, that gets into, what he should do on his property is the current subject of the lawsuit.
My, yeah, my properties are always, uh, very attractive. And I think they're an asset to the town for 30 years.
We went through a lot of work on this site plan. I'm not going to relitigate this site plan unless one of my board members wants to.
No way. And we have to be, we've had conditions set.
So we have conditions set.
Conditions are set and fine. I can do nothing about it.
Then...
Can we sign the building permit?
It's up to the board.
I'm not voting for it.
I'm not voting for it. I would have liked to have seen more work before now.
Okay. So...
So we don't have a motion.
No, you do. You have three members that can vote.
Well, no one's made a motion.
Mr. Smith gets his, his first shot at this here.
I wasn't here for the naming of it all, was I?
Actually, you can't vote.
You can't vote for a building permit?
I don't know, can?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
No, no. Was pre-existing. And, and we need...
He hasn't been through any of the hearings or anything.
Right.
How can he make an option?
Well, no, it's not for approval, but it's not for approval.
It's for a building permit.
It's for a building permit.
I guess he can, but might be appropriate to abstain rather.
Talk about putting me on the spot.
Yeah.
I, I, frankly, I'm just concerned that I'm not hearing that there's a real effort to finish up the work that we're talking about and that the goal seems to be to finish up the buildings rather than the work the town had asked for along the edge of Oak Street. Forget about your neighbors' eyesore. I'm talking about the grading and the finish of the work along Oak Street. And that has not, that hasn't been done.
It hasn't changed.
And I, and I, what I'm hearing tonight is you're not very happy with the conditions and I...
There's a lot of money involved in the conditions and that building has to go up in order to receive the money.
But that's not our problem.
I'm not, my, my job is to get, my job is to get, at least my understanding of it is to have this done prior to an occupancy permit. And if that's the case, then it will be taken care of.
I mean, we have just approved another site plan on another one of your properties for a tremendous, um, uh...
Project.
Project. So it's not that we have not approved other projects.
15 Corporate Court Drive.
I know that. We work very hard on that.
Yeah, and we've been very supportive. We actually changed the town bylaws in consultation with your son to make it easier to market these properties in a way that would bring the best development to the town of Pembroke.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, ma'am.
And we've been doing that.
Right.
Well, we, we're the ones that are out there every, every day, that's all. We had a tough winter to work with, but assuming this was graded...
I think what we'd like to hear is a stronger commitment to comply with the conditions for this particular project before you get an occupancy permit.
Also, I think the issue is, I mean, just from my experience internal to Town Hall, I mean, we may not have, you know, necessarily all the power we'd like to, to, um, to prevent the occupancy permit from being issued.
I still don't understand the timeframe for getting the finished work along Oak Street done as part of this building process. I don't understand. It sounds like you're not even going to build the sidewalk and do the...
It's already upgraded now.
And so are you going to do it this summer?
I just told you. I said it'd be four months, it'd be four months to build the building. I expect it to be taken care of. If it's according to the permit and the permit requires it to be done, it'll be done.
Okay, so you're, so you're happy to comply with the conditions?
Well, I'm, I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't be very smart on my part to come in here and say, I'm not going to comply with the conditions. Let's be honest.
It sounded like that to us.
Say one thing, do another.
It sounded a bit like that to us. So I'll make a motion that we approve the building permit for, what's the number here? For 26280. We, we, we will have the clerks sign the building permit for 26280 Oak Street. A previously approved site plan, number SP 2-17.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I vote?
I believe you can because it's the, it's directing the clerk. And if we had lost half of our board, we would still need to direct the clerk. So I believe you can.
I'd say aye.
Okay. Are those opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining? I'm abstaining. I do want to see this done.
I'm sorry?
Do you have, do you have the form?
Yes.
I didn't come in for that purpose.
Well, that's, that's, uh, I mean, that's only three in favor, so you can't.
We can, we can sign a building permit with three in favor?
Is that true?
Yes, sure. It's a majority.
It's a majority if there's present, I think.
Right.
That was a majority of the board.
Is it?
Are you sure?
I don't know. Somebody wants to challenge us, they can. People like to sue us like that.
I don't think anybody would. In this case, I don't think so.
Thank you.
I really do want to see that sidewalk done before everything else is done.
Well, there's a...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could I ask the board a question?
Mm-hmm.
My reasons for, and I don't even know if it's my turn. Is it my turn? Eight thirty, eight forty-five? I come in on another issue. Consider the amount of work that has to be done for the hospital installation of the water material. I would, I would like to commence on this particular site here. The grading of the site to accommodate the future building on the side.
What are you talking about? On which side? On the hospital side or on this side?
On this side. The look is that there's quite a bit of material that's going to be removed from the hospital site as part of the, as part of the sale of the property.
Yeah.
And I'd like to place it, and I'd like to do it, uh, with the permission of the planning board. I'm not, I don't even know where I need the permission, but I'd like to do it with it. I'd like to bring that, the site that was submitted a few minutes ago up to grade. And, uh, and basically it's the larger portion of the site. And, uh, I think that it'd be much easier to market it as a level site. It's not that way at the moment. There's a berm across the, around the perimeter of it. And I'd just like to know if I...
Are you talking about the site that we were just talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Finishing? And now you're talking about finishing in accordance with the plan or differently than the plan?
I'm doing something in addition to what the plan says. That's what I'm doing.
No, I don't hear it that way. So you're going to use the fill that you take from the 15 Corporate Park Drive that you need for that site?
That is correct.
You're going to clear that site and grade it?
Um, it's pretty well cleared and I, I don't know what they are...
But you're going to take, you're going to take material from that side?
That is correct.
And you want to move it over to the site we just discussed?
That is correct.
And you want to use that to grade the site?
Yes.
And finish it and get it ready for building?
That is correct.
Is it going to, so is that...
It's not going to change the sidewalk. It's not going to change the elevation from the...
Right.
So I'm sort of sitting here a little in amazement that you just boxed it, building a sidewalk, but you're going to use it in a way that might be more...
I'm not going to touch the sidewalk.
Disturbing.
These are...
No, I'd like to see the sidewalk finished.
Well, if you're going to be doing that now, then it'll have a nice level site.
The bills are...
Graded out, you'll, you'll plant grass there.
I'm going to plant grass and trees, the whole nine yards.
So as long as you regrade it in accordance with this plan, then you can bring, so fill and regrade here with clean borrowed material. Seed and regrade the area. So if you're bringing in fill for that site to comply with this plan, then you're complying with the plan.
Which we're going to do until, I guess, the town manager comes in.
Right?
And basically we just look at it like we're contemplating.
And you're going to do that, you're going to put that concurrent with the, um, the building of your new building there?
Yeah, all we're doing is we're just saying it's okay to...
There's probably a curb before here because Hospital wants to be going where it was.
Right. Get material out of there and onto that site at 26280, the better off you're going to be.
The quicker that the hospital site is going to go up. They want to start immediately. But they can't start immediately until I get the material up.
So what I would say is you just have to commit to refilling and regrading the area in accordance with...
Site plan, site plan SP 2-17.
You're going to build it to, to the grade shown here.
This is already done. This is already done. I'm going to basically fill this out.
We're going to.
I'm going to be filling the inside.
The inside.
The inside.
Where all the stumps get out.
The inside to cut. It's one tunnel.
It's all really high right now. Here, this is to, to fill it for its available site. That's what I...
To the plan.
This is a, this is a...
It's going to go higher than the...
This is the sidewalk out here.
I know that. Thank you.
Now, it's got to comply with the site plan. It's got to comply with the site plan.
But, but the site plan is called for a 108.
So it's got to comply with that.
Right, and, and we got a, we got a 112, a 110, you got a 106, you got a little bit of fill going in there, Bill. This is, this is a retention bond, isn't it?
Well, it's on, it's, it's just, it's just designed...
I think it was supposed to be temporarily.
I think it was just designed to make sure that it sort of holds its own until something gets planned there.
Filmed there, yeah.
Um, I, it sounds like what you're, you're starting to plan what you're going to build there and you want to fill it.
That is correct. And everybody from down here now looks at this, looks at this, what appears to be a, a hole.
Yeah.
Okay, and what we want to do is degrade it so it becomes a visible site that somebody can come and say...
So we don't have a...
But what I don't want to see is now, are you going to be creating a mound here with no site plan?
It's not higher than that. It's slower than that.
That's going to go onto your neighbor's property or onto Oak Street?
No, it's not going to go on the neighbor's block.
Madam Chairman, excuse me. Phil, you're going to have to reset a plan showing the proposed grades. The proposed grades here are 108. They're just a hole.
They're existing conditions.
No, it's not existing conditions.
That's a...
That's proposed.
I mean, every time...
The existing conditions are 106, 107, and you're coming to a 108. You got a 110 over here.
He stripped out a mound alone, though.
I, I know, I don't even get it. I know, but what I'm saying is...
Right, but the problem is that if we're going to adjust the site plan, we need to have engineering review to tell us that it's not going to go off onto Oak Street or go onto neighbor's property or mess up your septic design.
Okay, I guess that, yes, okay.
Right? I mean, I don't...
No, you're building the other buildings.
You don't, you don't, in order to show it, we've got to do it that way. You've got to talk, talk to your friends over at Bush Macallan, the engineers, and just have them give you a revised plan showing the proposed grades that you intend to build to. So that we can, we can see that.
So we could do this as a revised site plan as opposed to a new site plan, right? So if you came in with a page that shows the new grade and we have Peter do a quick review of it or whoever did a review of this, is it Peter?
Shouldn't take that much work.
Then all they're looking at is the new grades and saying, that's not going to cause a problem. And then we can look at it as a revised site plan and it may be even a minor modification depending on how big, how much of a grade difference you're going to have. So just have them change this, this, this piece of the plan that shows those contours and tell us how you're going to grade it. And then we can have somebody do a quick review and tell us if it's, if it raises any issues we haven't considered. I'm not an engineer.
How much higher than that?
I'm trying to be a wise guy, Bill, but, but if you pick that up three or four feet, you're going to, you're going to have water shedding off the site. And I don't know how, how, what grade you want to build it to. That was designed to be a retention base in temporary.
I understand that, but, and it would certainly be no higher than the grade that is out here. It's currently out. Just so that it's level.
The water, the water has to go somewhere.
I know that. There's got to be, there's got to be some creation.
So he's got to, you know, have them look at it and tell us what they think. And it's only a matter of a couple lines on the plan. It's not a big deal.
Okay, so submit it to the board for...
Please.
As a revised site plan?
All right, very well.
Not as a new site plan, just as a revised site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It's eight thirty-five.
Who are next favorite?
Yeah. Lot three, Emily Lane, in Stone Meadow, definitive subdivision. Do we have that, that plan in front of us, Matthew?
Yeah.
We talked about getting that next question.
Yeah, I've done some research on that.
It's almost comical.
Some things...
I didn't know how to define, I didn't know how to define that stuff.
Smooth operator.
So this one's got a lot of issues, I think.
Okay, so do we have the subdivision plan and some history of where we are?
Yeah, so it was, um, approved, I've got smaller drawings too, but, um, it was approved in, um, in 2005, I think, and then modified in 2006, the actual subdivision plan. And then a, um, uh...
A stone wall?
A Form A.
By Silver Lake High School? It's, okay.
Yeah, this is the one that's sort of on the Pembroke-Kingston border.
Oh, okay.
So I've got drawings of the small size and large size of the, uh, the original one that was approved and then modified.
Is this the, the modified one?
So that is the, then the Form A that was done to further subdivide, uh, the subdivision, if that makes sense, which was signed by both this board and the Kingston planning board.
I hate Form A.
Yeah.
By a subdivision.
And I agree. And then they, the Kingston board wrote in all these conditions here. And the only reason I was able to get this was to, thanks to the help of Kathy Salmon and the associates of the office who put it up.
But this can't be right because that doesn't even exist. That's chopped off there.
You can get up if you want, Dan, to see these things.
Where's the one that has the, that he came in with, with the final?
And then, I'm sorry, and then, uh, he did get... So he did get the covenant releases for the two lots, but then it's been changed.
Who's the actual final dated plan that we looked at?
I have very good... That's the one.
There's a new one.
Sorry, guys. Oh, this is, this is Kingston's. This is Kingston's.
Yeah, well, it's ours as well. We signed it soon.
We did. I didn't see our sign.
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, it's, it's...
And I've got, I've also got the file of this. I mean, this is, this is, I've got this, this is the same thing.
That's not the latest one.
That's me. I signed that for...
Do they have anything dated after this plan?
Which lot is this two?
No.
This isn't ours.
And so this is, uh, this is the same, this is the same thing. But this is before Kingston wrote all this stuff here and before they signed it. But I, I believe this is...
I signed it over here.
Exactly, yeah.
For one lot. One lot that we have, we signed.
This was the Form A, so it was to create these two. But really, it rearranged the whole, it rearranged the whole thing because that lot here kind of got changed as well.
So this is the last lot, correct?
Yeah, I guess the question is which one are you actually asking for?
Which lot three, right?
Yeah, it is lot three.
It's at the end of the plan, is that correct?
You identified on the, uh... I thought it...
So is this one right here?
Okay, so, so it's, it's, it's C 4B.
This, this, this is why we did...
I mean, I guess it's number three, but it's actually lot 4B.
Lot B?
Okay, so that's what I thought, yeah. And so one of the conditions that Kingston, um...
So lot 4B is both in Pembroke and Kingston. The building would be entirely in Pembroke?
Yes.
That's your plan?
Yes.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's what Kingston...
He had the case out on the notes here on the side.
Oh, the, the address is, the address is three Emily Lane. I'm sorry.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, but is there room to put it all in Pembroke?
I mean, with the setback.
As long as the bedrooms are in Pembroke, isn't that the case?
No, the whole daughter has to be in there.
So according to, so they literally vote on the plan?
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah, and that's the plus.
Did they hand roll on the plan?
There you go.
Yeah, that's Kingston.
I don't think I've ever seen that before. Mutual release and settlement agreement. No residential dwelling nor a portion of a residential dwelling shall be constructed on the section of lot 4B that is located within the town of Kingston. The trust shall provide the board with a survey of as-built plan demonstrating compliance with this condition. The trust may construct a pool, a shed, or other non-residential outbuildings on the section of lot four B that is located in Kingston so long as those structures comply with the Mass State Building Code and the Town Zoning and General Bylaws. The trust shall lay out and pave the way shown as Elizabeth Drive on the plan to twelve feet in width and shall also lay out and pave the turnaround located at the end of Elizabeth Drive. So this?
Right, so they'll have access to the solar farms. It'll be twelve feet in width. I know there'll be a turnaround there. That way they'll have access to the solar farm.
Solar farm from that street?
Yes.
Yeah, lot four B is this one here, correct?
Yes, that's what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, right.
This is the subdivision.
That has to do with more of the, that has to do with the developer. That's what the hand is issue with.
Okay, but as far as, how are you gonna fit the house on lot four B?
Do you have like a plot plan of the house, right?
Without, with the proper setbacks?
Um, he was, well, basically, he was, it's my, he indicated to me that he would be able to do it without, with the proper setbacks and with nothing going into Kingston. I mean...
I don't, I can't see it.
This is important. It's a...
Matthew, where's your scale?
Do you have a scale, David?
I do, yeah.
You have a scale.
I've got two scales.
One is equal sixty.
So saying the lot, the house has to be all in Pembroke?
It has to be all in Pembroke.
So it has to all be within this portion of the circle that's in Pembroke, and it still has to meet setbacks.
It's like a deck or something like that. You can't have, you can have some type of structures all back, but...
Well, I mean, I'm looking here.
It's gotta be within the circle, too, right?
Yeah, it's gotta, well, I don't care, but it's...
How big of a house are we talking?
I mean, you know, if you're...
Ten by ten?
When you wanna see it finished, right? Is there enough room?
Yeah, I mean, usually we can see a building plan, right?
A pencil, not a pen.
Um, maybe.
What's my setback in this area?
This is a...
Let me look at my zoning bylaws.
Not these gentlemen, but the...
Twenty-fourty feet, yeah.
You know, yeah, it's kinda crazy.
So on the residential... Eleven.
Twenty should be easy.
Yeah, that may could be.
Well, it depends on how, why they have to make it to get any amount of, right?
I don't think that would work.
And you want him to oppose for you that it's gonna work or other than Tom trying to design it here?
Well, Tom likes it.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna mark the plan up. But if you've got a twenty-foot and a twenty-foot setback...
Yeah, there shouldn't be a specific plot plan for this.
Yeah, there should be. There's gonna have to be at some point. But you're gonna have a house that's gonna be fifteen feet wide and forty feet long.
Again.
It's forty feet of the way line.
Forty feet.
And is that where a setback from the way line of forty feet not being in conformance with adjacent dwellings?
That would, that would...
In which case a lesser setback may be permitted, but not less than twenty-five feet. So I guess we wanna see the building plan. If you guys are getting a building permit, there's a building plan. Does everybody wanna see that or is that just me?
And also, there's an issue too with the, I mean, I think the lots were released. Some lots were released on this, but then the whole, then the...
Those lots were released before this was subdivided.
And so I don't think, yeah, so I don't think these lots have been released in this current configuration, so that's another issue. And then I think also, looking at the minutes from when this came through, I think the board wanted more response as well.
Yeah, so I don't think we have to worry about rear yard, 'cause the rear yard could go right up to the lawn.
The rear yard could be in Kingston, I guess.
Yeah, the, as, yeah, as, it can go right up to the town line, yeah. We don't have a setback requirement from the town line.
So, and we're twenty feet off the side, right?
So we need, we need an actual lot.
So is that a newer rule that a house can't be...
You might be able to squeeze it in.
Well, it's no less than twenty-five feet, depending on what the other lots look like, right? Because we wanna avoid people building a adjacent house in the front yard of the next door neighbor.
Well, what I'm concerned is that I've seen things happen before where everyone thinks it's in compliance, and then someone starts to build, and they suddenly get a fight on their hands where someone says, stop construction. I've even seen one case where they got building permits, signed off by the building inspector, completely built a house, and the court's telling them to take the building down.
Isn't that there?
No, I'm talking, um, a case in Rockland. It was a pretty vicious fight.
It happened there, yeah.
Oh, it did? Really?
I'm just saying with the, I believe with the court.
That was Bobby Delgree.
Was that the seller thing or something, the actual builder?
Oh, in Rockland, yeah.
One of his houses there?
Yeah.
An existing house?
It's my understanding that Mr. Hannah had litigated it in court somehow, and the judgment was in his favor. He's the developer there. Again, that's a separate issue. That's with him.
Right, but I don't want us to end up in a litigation situation.
Yeah.
I'm trying, we have enough of that going on right now. I'm trying to just make sure that what we're signing off on as a building permit is actually in compliance with our plan and with the requirements of the Kingston Planning Board requirements.
We're not holding Mr. Hannah against you. We're...
Yeah, I know he's not.
It's just frequently he interprets things differently than others.
Uh, that's why I'm here, actually. That's why I sent my...
Yeah, but do you have a sketch showing the building?
On that building permit application, there's nothing?
Again, I was sent in with this, and this is what he sent me in with, and evidently he thought that you guys were aware of the situation, and it was just simplest getting a signature.
Who's going to win?
I'm here, I'm Gavin Remco. Because Remco is the one who locked the lot from the developer.
Last time somebody was here, we were saying that we needed to pull out the plans and really look at it because we were concerned that we didn't understand how this was all working, and we didn't know that we were working off of the right plan.
Okay.
And so that's why we actually brought it up for another meeting. So right now, I feel like we're again in a position where we have incomplete information about...
We don't know what the setbacks were.
Where the setbacks are gonna be.
Look, I'm sorry. I think also the board needs to decide in terms of the covenant situation and the road bond or not, if that's an issue or not, because the covenants, the lots that were released in the covenant were not these lots precisely.
What do we have on the road bond right now?
We've got a big chunk of money on the road bond.
But I think the, looking at the, I mean, looking at the, looking at the minutes for this...
I know there was a hundred, there was a bond money escrow with the town of Pembroke for a hundred and eight thousand.
Hundred and eight, a hundred and eighty?
Hundred and eight thousand. Again, that was with the developer.
So at this time... They, it looks like Tyler Dimm did a new estimate of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. You know, back when this Form A was signed. So I don't know if the board wants to enforce a new payment.
Well, who are we going to, we wanna make sure that road is finished.
Exactly.
Yeah. Are we going to Mr. Hannah?
Yeah, he's the one who gave us the money.
Oh, boy.
Let me check what the balances are right now.
So, can you help me out here? What lots are actually built on right now?
All of them, I think?
Yeah, these are just two new lots, from my understanding.
So wait, lot one is built, lot two is built, lot three is built. Is lot four A built?
Um, lot four A is not currently built, I believe. Well, let me see, I'm getting confused here, so I need to look at the plan here. Lot four B is the one that's not currently built, which is the one you're talking about tonight.
Right.
Which is three Emily Lane. The other one is in the process of being built. I mean, it's pretty much finished, so...
And did we release lot four A, I think?
I believe you did.
No, you, strictly speaking, I don't think you did because you released ones referencing...
I thought, I thought we released all the lots when he came up with the road bond money.
I mean, I guess maybe it's ambiguous.
Yeah, I think we released all of them.
I mean, I think you released them based on...
We held them up until we got a check from him.
Right.
Anyway, the current road bond balance is one oh seven, hundred and seven thousand.
In our, in our estimate, do we have money in sidewalk fund, too, on this one?
Should be.
Do you have sidewalks on both sides here?
Do you know if you have sidewalks on both sides?
Um, there is...
You have to drive by and look.
There are side, yeah, there are. I believe there are sidewalks.
On one side, right?
Yeah, and then the street trees aren't in the street during the, not the road layout. That was another issue that we've had over the years.
Yeah.
And then there was an issue with the tree in the cul-de-sac, but he let, he let the Christmas trees in the cul-de-sac die.
He did? He said, "Why?"
'Cause we didn't like the Christmas trees.
Yeah, so when the lots were released, the ref, when, you know, the covenant released for the lots, there was referencing, it wasn't referencing them as shown on that Form A drawing, but it seems like it's referencing the old drawings from two thousand six.
Do we have the meeting minutes from December twenty-first, twenty fifteen? Because he was supposed to come back on Monday, December twenty-first, twenty fifteen, so he would like the remaining lots to be released. A new cost estimate will be done, as all the bounds will be in by then, and the amount will be changing. The board feels that Cleveland's select pear trees should be used in the cul-de-sac. Mr. Hannah stated that he would make the change to put in the pear trees in the cul-de-sac.
I don't think that's been done.
So, um, so we need the, so this references the next meeting on Monday, December twenty-first, twenty fifteen, so we need those minutes in order to follow the trail here.
Yeah.
Are they in the file? Did you see those at all?
I didn't see them, but I can look. I mean, they should be in either one, I mean, probably in the next file also.
He brought money.
I mean, they should be in this file.
Hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Well, my question is whether the hundred and seven was what it had been adjusted to in December twenty-first, twenty fifteen, because this says that the revised cost estimate was a hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred, but that Mr. Hannah would be back for the next meeting on Monday, December twenty-first, as a new, and a new cost estimate would be done, as the bounds would be in by then and the amount should be adjusted. So the amount may have been adjusted below one twenty-five.
Who was the engineer on that one? Was that Tyler?
Yeah.
But Mr. Hannah did state that he would make the change to Cleveland's select pear trees on the cul-de-sac.
I don't think those were in this file, but they're probably in the minutes file that I could... I could also get like the road bonds. I could look at history of the road bonds, too.
December twenty-first, twenty fifteen.
That's going to be two and a half years ago.
But supposedly the date we were gonna consider releasing all of the lots.
There's a letter, I mean, there's like a review letter from Tyler Dimm since December twenty-first.
From December twenty-first. All right, Stone Meadow Farm. John Hannah came before the board with a new cost estimate for his road bond. Tyler Dimm had prepared a new estimate in the amount of one twenty-one thousand. Mr. Hannah stated that since this new estimate was prepared, more work had been done on the subdivision. He stated that more bounds have been placed and asked for a reduction in the cost of the bounds. After a lengthy discussion concerning the remaining items on the cost estimate, the board granted a reduction in the amount of the road bond to one hundred and fifteen thousand. Mr. Hannah requested release of the remaining lots for the subdivision, lots one, three, and four.
So we released those and then he subdivided four, right?
I think he subdivided four before, just a few weeks before you released them, but I'm not sure.
This is December second, twenty fifteen, and we signed it on December seventh, twenty fifteen. And this release of lot four was on...
December twenty-first, twenty fifteen.
December twenty-first, twenty fifteen, so why'd we release lot four if it had already been subdivided into four A and four B?
I think it was subdivided afterwards.
No, I'm looking at the numbers right here.
It's there.
Date's right here.
Oh, had subdivision?
Yeah.
It was subdivided already?
Twelve, seven, twenty fifteen. We signed an A and R plan.
Oh, but Kingston may have signed it right there.
Yeah, no.
We did.
Right here.
Four A, four B. Yeah, yeah, I think you're saying.
Pembroke Planning Board.
Kingston signed it after us. I don't know when they signed it.
But we signed...
Well, the lots are conforming lots, so that's not a, the issue before us now is whether we wanna sign off on building permit.
Well, do we even, I mean, that's Kingston's restriction. What do we care? As long as they've got it in the circle.
You like to send that. Uh, yeah, think about it a little bit.
Can I see the Form A again?
I mean, there's nothing that says, I mean, as long as they get that house in the circle, we, that's their...
Yeah, but do we wanna start an issue with the assessor's office and Kingston and the assessor's office and Pembroke?
Because we don't know where the house is.
Because we don't know where the house is.
Okay, so it looks, I'm sorry.
Are we the...
So actually, this seems important. It looks like, it looks like Kingston...
We're policing their role, I'm seeing it. Yeah, okay.
It looks like, it looks like Kingston signed this in June of twenty seventeen. So it looks like, it looks like John Hannah waited like a year and a half.
So what that means is when we signed the A and R in twenty fifteen, we didn't know about Kingston's...
We didn't?
Um, conditions. So Kingston put its conditions in place after we had already signed the A and R, and the A and R never came back to us. So as far as I'm concerned, the issue of Kingston's plans is Kingston's, um...
Right, 'cause everything we have documents...
Supersedes what we did?
No, I'm saying it's kind of Kingston's enforcement problem.
I see.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we sign the building permit.
I mean, do we wanna, do we wanna try to enforce someone else's conditions?
Going Pembroke, it can overlap.
Well...
Well, we have to take the vote first.
We didn't, but what I'm saying is we already, this is like something that Kingston slapped on way after we were done with it. So we're, it's not really our...
We only really require, I mean, it's for the assessors to work out if a town is in both town, is in both towns, as to how they get taxed, and it can be a real difficult problem for the homeowner down the road. And where the bedrooms is, is typically where you decide where the kids go to school.
Yeah, if the bedrooms are in Kingston, the kids are gonna have to go to Kingston's school.
Now, the only problem with that is if the bedrooms are in Pembroke, but there's valuable pieces of the house in Kingston, does Kingston get a piece of the assessment and we get to pay for all of the public services for the house? So that would be Pembroke's interest in making sure that the house isn't that spilt entirely in Pembroke, so that if we're gonna be paying for the services and the school and everything else to services property...
Okay, so but we can't sign...
But that's really way off our...
Right, we can't sign the building permit until, unless we know where the house is gonna be.
The house is gonna be entirely in Pembroke.
But how do we know that?
But I guess I can talk with Trace and make sure it happens. Or at least let her know if that's their client.
I guess we're reinvestigating, like, we're like, I don't know, I think we're like opening something we don't have to.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, with the best interest of all is building this house, is to build it the way it's gonna be optimal. So, I, did you make the motion to sign the building?
I made a motion to sign, to instruct our court to sign this.
I'll second that.
Now, planning, planning is crossed off here for some reason. Why is that?
Oh, no, you just don't, that's just, yeah.
In the opinion that he wants us to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, you made a motion. Does someone second it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Opposed? Nobody's opposed. No one's abstaining. I guess our feeling is that it complies with Pembroke's rules and rights, as long as it complies with that subdivision plan. I would caution you that you're gonna have a huge mess on your hands if in fact it does not all end up in Pembroke.
Yeah, I can assure you that it will all be in Pembroke.
And, and that it needs to have the setbacks in Pembroke.
Okay.
So I don't know how big it'll be.
Yeah, he's, he's got it. He's got some good engineers and architects.
Kingston for your, your septic.
Yeah, I...
Yeah, I guess that would work.
Yeah, that's just about right.
That's a good point. Kingston is not gonna sign off on your septic unless it sees that the plan complies with that, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So we're putting it back in your lap, really. Don't weigh this too much.
Not my lap.
Unless the enforcement people deal with it.
Excuse me, excuse me, two words, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you guys for making this video a fun one. You guys have a good day. Good night.
So the first thing we really need to do is to get our minutes approved so that we don't end up in any sort of violation situation. On April thirteenth, we have four here.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of April fifteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
I wouldn't vote on that, too.
You, you can vote, actually, but we don't need your feel, except if you wanna abstain, that's fine.
You can't vote if he wasn't here.
No.
Let's continue with the approval of the minutes, please.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of Monday, April twenty-third, twenty eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you wanna abstain, Dan?
I will abstain.
Okay. On the minutes of Monday, April thirtieth?
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Dan's going to abstain, Dan Smith is abstaining. That was Dan Smith in each one of those cases. I will note that we have executive session minutes from some of those meetings, and those minutes will be held until, um, we go into executive session again to consider them.
Okay, um, can I just ask a request?
Yes.
Is, is Matt, Matt, are you sending us the minutes by email prior to approval?
No, but I can if you want.
Yeah, I would definitely like that.
Um, one of the things we talked about instituting was perhaps a new program where the minutes get sent via email prior to the meeting, and that way, people who attended the meeting might be able to alert someone else who attended the meeting to raise an issue?
Yeah, well, I just looked up the minutes from December twenty first, twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
Because they were emailed to me.
Oh, I see, okay.
I just looked, I looked up in my email.
I thought you had a website or something.
No, they're, they're on the web, I think.
I don't think that far back, so if you could, uh, send those via email to all board members. One, one sort of point of order is one of the issues that comes up, that is still coming up, is a site plan that our newest member is involved with. And I just want to see, Dan, if you want to go on the record as recusing yourself from any matters related to three forty six Washington Street.
From here on out or just previously?
Here on out. That, recusing yourself only means that you can't, um, participate in any deliberations with the planning board regarding that project.
I think simply you just can't vote, Dan, that's all. You, you, you can sit out there and you can talk, but you, you can't vote on it.
Is there an issue?
If it pertains to...
Your, your site plan.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I can definitely refuse my...
You'll recuse yourself on anything having to do with the site plan you submitted for three forty six Washington Street? Okay, so I just want to have that on the record for everyone to be clear on that.
At any point you guys want to throw me out, just give me the nod and I'll happily leave.
Okay. The other thing we have on the board agenda tonight is whether we want to discuss possible reorganization of the planning board tonight, or if we want to hold that for a later meeting.
When can we do it and be done with it?
Okay, just do, um...
Okay, can I make the first motion?
Well, wait, hold on, because there's a, I thought we had to do a whole...
What do we need to do?
Wasn't there like a whole process?
There's a process to...
Yeah, there is language, and I can pull out the language. I think it might be easier to wait.
So we'll wait, we'll put that on the agenda for next week.
Right, because I think we even need to, because I remember how Maryland did it, we even...
We had to open it, we had to open nominations, then we had to close nominations.
I think that's right, yeah.
Do we do it in the same meeting, or do we have to open nominations and then vote on the next meeting?
It's the same meeting.
No, it's within the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll have that procedure and we'll have that light out for our next meeting?
Yeah, I have the verbiage ready, yeah.
And by the way, I, I'm not advocating any change.
But we can, we can discuss that when we do, um, agendas now.
Unless we start having our meetings at five thirty.
Because we gotta go through the process, and it's a, it's a belabored, yeah, it's a belabored process.
So apparently, the screening of the Habermock Solar Project, uh, we've been told by the selectmen's office that we need to get three quotes for the war, work for contracts over twenty five thousand and best practice to do so in any event. And once we get the quotes, they may be willing to contribute extra funds to help. Should we ask Matthew to work with the selectmen's office on the procurement side to go ahead and get quotes for that screening and then see what we can afford?
Work with the DPW's office, because they, they're more used to, they're used to pulling out those bids, bids like that.
Yeah, I concur.
Yeah, I mean, my hope is, obviously, I have no, I have no experience or expertise in that, so my hope is that either the selectman or DPW can actually do, do that.
Tell, tell Rose and Susan, now the DPW will know, work with you.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I mean, I've discussed with Sabrina Edge so far, so I'll have to at least confirm it then.
But we're obviously too stupid to know to go to the selectmen's, so we'll just, we'll go to DPW.
Well, DPW will know the people who, they can get the three, and of course, we want to comply with three, three quotes.
We have to get four prices.
Yeah.
So we've got to call three of them.
And we will share that information with the board selectmen.
Yeah, because we're going to be asking them for money.
Well, obviously, share it with them.
But, but the one issue too there is that we talked about whether the DPW would be willing to help us out with labor or services in any way, shape, or form. So when we're talking about putting this out to bid, the other question for the DPW is whether there's any way in which they can contribute or help.
And before we start even talking about putting another solar field in there, I, we got to get this thing wrapped up, because, I think.
Yeah, and, and presumably, it's making a lot of money for the town, so coming up with an extra ten thousand dollars shouldn't be a huge ordeal.
Matt, if, if you want, talk to, uh, Sabrina first, and then let her see the girls down below. And if you want, when you want to get together, I will come in and we'll talk with them.
Yeah, that might be good, because I don't have experience to put it together, RFPs, which I'm sure you do.
Smith Escavator is going to put a bid in, Dando Construction is going to put a bid in, so we'll both recuse ourselves, no big deal.
Just make sure we have a quorum to vote on.
Have to make sure Joe's here that night.
Excuse me, we, we got one member who never comes. Can we, right?
We need to ask the board of selectmen about, um...
Appointing.
And from what I can read, appointing, uh, a member to our board in this, we need, uh, the remaining members of the planning board and the board of selectmen collectively to appoint a member. We had talked about asking Paul Whitman if he would come back on the board as an appointed position for one year until there's a new election to fill the seat that was vacated by Brian Van Reipers, yeah.
Paul's seat was vacated too.
Yeah, but...
Danville Paul's seat.
Okay, alright.
Danville Paul's seat, and that's a five-year seat.
Yes.
God bless you.
Wait a minute, so did you get out of it for less?
No, but Paul's...
The appointed seat will be less because...
About three years, and you're going to go, why did I get rid of this?
Yeah, the appointed seat will be for a year, and then the seat will open up for the remainder of the term.
Right, which, that's what happened when, uh, what's his face, we found him on board.
Uh, Pat Moran?
No. Joe, Joe Mulker.
So I mean, in this case, unfortunately, it was a, you know, and not a great reason for losing a board member, but we do have to fill that seat. So, um, um, do we want to express our, do, do we want someone to reach out to Paul Whitman? Do we want to reach out to the board of selectmen and seek applications?
We have to go to them first.
We do?
Because I believe, don't. The bylaw has to be a joint appointment between the planning board and the selectmen.
Yes.
I think, uh, Brian's, uh, not Brian, um, Paul's already said he's interested, so I think it's basically just getting them to sign on with it.
Matthew.
So Matthew, can you ask them the process, ask Sabrina the process, tell them that Paul's expressed the, um, the possibility that he would rejoin us for a year, which would allow us to finish up some projects that he had already been sitting on?
I think she's familiar with it, because she was here at that meeting.
And then we just need to find a way to schedule a joint meeting or...
Get on their agenda so we can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right away.
But maybe, I don't know if you want me or one of you guys to double check with Paul that he's still willing? I mean, that was a while ago.
It wasn't that long ago.
Let's get, let's get the agenda set up. Let's get on the agenda.
If, if you're, if you happen to get a minute, if Mary is in, talk to her.
No, we're going to talk to Paul directly.
Alright.
Okay.
I should be asking Lisa Paul.
Apparently, there was an as-built, okay, I'm trying to finish up because it's nine o'clock. As-built drawing for Shell Station at two twenty-three Church Street. We got the as-built drawing. The belief was that we would be returning their balance of engineering review once we got the six thousand dollars. But the question is whether we want Peter to do a review of the as-built drawing and his payment for his invoice would come out of the engineering review account.
That's correct.
In this case, there was, it was previously communicated to the, um, to the applicant that the money, that the six thousand dollars would be returned when they provided the as-built drawing. At the time, there was a little bit of, of, um, lack of understanding of that piece of the process. And so the question is whether or not we feel we need Peter's, uh, review of the as-built at this point.
So just to, just to clarify, so I mean, it was, I suppose it was my mistake, but at the time, I was on the honest impression that once they submitted a, a correct as-built, they would get the six thousand dollar grant.
It should be, should have been, should read, uh, once they submit an approved as-built, so, yes.
Once they figure out that it was as-built.
If the as-built is approved, why are we reviewing it again? I mean, we had our engineer out there during the whole process, right?
I just, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's what I feel, and I guess I just feel like, I mean, maybe it was my mistake, but I think in fairness to the...
The as-built, the business has been up and running, and it was there through the whole process. This is on, um, Church Street by, way across from Mary Lou's, where it's in Seasons.
Yeah, it's a Shell Station.
Shell, Shell Station is...
Out from the Christmas tree shop.
Out from the Christmas tree shop.
So do we feel comfortable now that we have an as-built releasing the engineering balance, or do we think that we still need for the review?
I think if they made a written request, we can do it.
Do they have a written request with us?
Oh, yeah, that was a lot of...
Alright, so I'll make a motion that we return the, um...
The balance of the engineering.
Balance of the engineering for that project.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay. We have estimate for construction inspections for the, uh, project at fifteen Corporate Park Drive, included a cost of an as-built review, can we, um...
Three hundred thirty-four, forty-five, was that it?
Corporate inspections, forty-two hundred dollars is what Peter believes that we're going to need for corporate inspections at fifteen Corporate Park Drive. Are we okay with, uh, Matthew informing the applicant of that amount?
Yes.
And act, and so that does include the, his estimate of, of doing the as-built review as well?
Yes, it does.
But don't we, how much do we have in their account right now?
I'd have to double check, it's, I mean, probably close to zero, but I have to check. But one other thing is that I would suggest that, um, um, you know, in this situation, we, like, I add like a bit of a buffer to make it more, just so that we don't get in a situation where it gets lower or contact them again, and it becomes...
Five thousand or six thousand?
Yeah, round it up to six thousand.
Yeah, something like that.
I think if we round it up to six thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, we open ourselves up to a, a problem, like allowing one to not have an as-built review and requiring the next?
No, because in this case, we're sort of informing them ahead of time in our policy, and the last one...
Yes, we did.
We didn't. Um, and so I think generally, our policy is to have engineering review of the site as-built, and that that was just one where we, we're sort of agreeing that we didn't, we weren't as, we didn't communicate in the way that we would have liked. And given the amount of engineering review we had on that one, and plus, there's a lot of engineering review on a gas station anyway.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Because of all the other D E P type regulations, so...
Looks nice too, so...
I think we're okay with that.
Appreciate it, so.
So, tell them we need, um, six thousand, do we need a vote on it?
Get it up to six, whatever he's got left, get it up to six.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, yeah, that goes enough of a buffer that we won't have to worry, that we, we shouldn't have to worry about it further down the line if it turns out Peter goes a bit over his estimate, which is possible.
Matthew did, um, go back to Seelin on two oh four Sinus Street, he said he would clean up the debris soon.
Okay.
He didn't give a deadline.
They'll do himself a favor by doing that.
Next Monday, there is a Z B A hearing for the appeal. Dan, you have to sort of stay silent on this one, I, I think it's fine. Just, do we want someone to go to the Z B A hearing next Monday at seven fifty P M?
For, for the three forty-six, three forty-six?
Yeah.
Washington Street?
No.
I would stay away from it, because of the pending litigation.
Okay. We'll get, do the reorganization next week then, and we'll give the registry of deeds the new board signatures, a new composition of the board, so that, like Dan, for example, they need all of our signatures with the, um, registry of deeds, so that if, um, someone needs to compare whether our signatures were authorized, they have a signature on file. Brian Murphy has asked for a covenant release for fifteen Corporate Park Drive because it's still part of Corporate Park Drive Extension Subdivision. We have this on the agenda for May twenty first.
Yeah.
Are we going to have a plan for that to sign?
Uh, I'll tell him to bring in, I think all we would need to bring in is the...
Is the covenant release?
Thank, yes, I'll, I'll tell him to...
Does that involve money?
What do you mean, money?
Is there, does he want money back, is that what he's looking for?
No, 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 this is for the, this is for the fifteen Corporate Park Drive where the new medical equipment's going.
Because, because it's still, it's still part of the Corporate Park Drive Extension Subdivision, which was approved back twenty years ago or something.
And he needs to be released from the corporate subdivision required.
The, the lot still needs to be released.
Thirty-five.
Um, I don't know if maybe he just found that out when they're doing the titles.
Next Monday, we're going to be voting on the Irving Oil decision, including conditions. So anybody, we do need to try to make sure that all of us who have attended the Irving Oil hearings...
Are there.
Are there. Did you miss one of the hearings on that, Irving Oil?
I don't believe so. I'll double check.
I was, I was there, yeah.
Matt, can you double check what the attendance was at all those public hearings? So we make sure we've got a, a quorum present to vote?
And just let me know, and I can reach out, make sure we have a quorum.
Then we're going to have the same issue with that other subdivision, uh, the Dominics Way, which we should be able to vote on.
Can you, yes, can you also send an email that tells us who attended which hearings on Dominics Way?
Because we've had two, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we had, did we have two? I thought we had one.
And unless you have Ty Boyd, please make it next...
Maybe we had, maybe we had one, I thought we, it felt like we had two.
I thought we had, we had, no, we had two.
I think we had at least two, yeah, for Dominics Way.
I thought we had one.
We did have two, we had two, because we had the one, and then they came to us with the petition and the second one, remember?
Okay.
Should I be like reading up to get up to speed, or just like you guys handle that one?
Well, these, on the public hearings, you have to, uh, you have to attend.
You can only miss one.
You can only miss one public hearing, and then you have to attest to the fact that you've read through everything for that public hearing.
But if you've missed two public hearings, you can't...
You can't.
But I still hope that you're here, because going through that process is educational. I'm still learning, and I've been here three years. Okay.
So this is Irving Oil, I'm checking, right?
Irving Oil and Dominics Way.
And then you're going to want to make sure for the one we just had too, which is, um, Lily's Path or whatever it is, because we just had a public hearing, and we're going to have another one.
On June fourth.
On June fourth.
And if the four of us are at the one on June fourth, or if, actually...
Dan, Dan, Dan was here, so...